...staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the city of Des Moines and have been appointed to the board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'll now go ahead and introduce our board members. We have Justin Gross, Dave Gare, Lynn Carlson, Marla Jones, Cindy Smith, and Nathan Blake. I'm also going to introduce our city staff who are assisting us today. Legal counsel to the zoning board of adjustment is Judy Parks Cruz. Our planning administrator for the city of Des Moines is Mike Ludwig. Bert Droste, city planner. Stu Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. Tyler Hall is our meeting moderator. Dolores Brezino is our meeting moderator. Eric Lundey, city planner. Jason Van Essen, city planner. And Catherine Dostard, city planner. I'm going to cover the meeting's procedure, and just for everyone's information, the meeting procedure is the same here online as it would be if we were at an in-person hearing. The only difference is will be when it's time to call on you and you wish to speak, there's a couple little clicks you might have to do, or a couple buttons on your phone to push, and we will help you through that. This is an open public meeting, but it is a formal legal hearing. The meeting is being recorded. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendation. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order as it appears on the agenda. For today's hearing, items one through three have been listed on what's called the consent portion of the agenda. These items are not planned to be individually discussed, and they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the written staff report, including any conditions therein, unless the appellant or a member of this board does not agree to approval on the consent agenda. If so, you can request that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. So if there's anybody here that would be opposed to our items on the consent agenda, we'll give them an opportunity to say so, and then we can hear those items in the regular portion of the agenda. I'll come back to that in just a few minutes. For the agenda, when an item is announced, staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the appellant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We will then move to the public comment portion of the hearing. Anyone wanting to speak in support of the request for appeal will be allowed to speak first. They will be allowed up to five minutes to present their comments. Then, anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes. If anybody has any general comment about the appeal, even if it's not for or against, they will be allowed for five minutes as well. This will be the audience's one and only opportunity to address the board. There are no opportunities for rebuttal or extra questions later on, aside from the appellant themselves. At the time you wish to speak, please click the raise hand icon on your screen if you're watching us online. Look at the participants panel, find your name, click the raise hand if you're participating by Zoom. If you're participating by phone, press star and nine, and the meeting moderator will then know to call on you. When it is your turn, they will then unmute your microphone. So again, if you're participating by Zoom, when we get to the item and we ask for input, if you would like to participate, click the raise hand button on the Zoom video app. Or if you're participating by phone, at that time when we call, press star and nine, or press star and nine, and then we'll recognize you. Please email any documents that you will be using in your presentation to the email address planning@dmgov.org. That's planning, P-L-A-N-N-I-N-G, at d-m-g-o-v dot o-r-g. So planning@desmoinggov.org. And most of you applicants, I think, have submitted your stuff ahead of time. But again, if there's anything you plan to use today that you did not submit, please send that to planning@dmgov.org for the record. Once we take everybody through the opportunity to speak, the board will then ask any additional questions that we may have of city staff. The applicant will be then given three more minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. All speakers are requested to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. Your address can be your place of residence. If your concerns or your location are at your residence, if you're here in a professional capacity as an attorney, engineer, architect, or contractor, you can give your address of place of business. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are asked to ensure their respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request, and we will make a decision here today. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes of the seven members of this board for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until mid next week to contact the city's permit and development center if you would need to obtain any necessary building permit. This will allow the decision of the board to be completed, documented in the form of a decision and order, and provided to our staff at the permit desk, and a copy will be provided to you as well. Any appeal that is approved today by the board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. The decision of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. If you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material that is written or otherwise that is used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record. So again, please contact city staff if you have not already provided them copies of your presentation items for the record. We ask that you keep your microphone on mute, other than when addressing the board, to limit distractions during the hearing that is in progress. Our board moderators will also have the ability to mute folks if that is necessary when they're not authorized to speak. I also want to make a note here, or maybe I can have staff jump in real quickly. Do we still have some folks who have not provided their name or address that would wish to speak today? And does city staff want to chime in on that?
Sure, thank you, Mel. This is Bert Droste, planner for the city of Des Moines. It appears we have somebody named David and somebody named Gretchen's iPad, and then we also have one phone number from area code 319 that we need to have renamed to the participant's first and last name. If you need help changing your name, just speak up now, and I can rename you.
So hit the raise hand button on Zoom if you're in the app and don't know how to change your name. You can hover over your name if you have a list of the participants, and you'll see either some dots or the word "more," and you can click on that and hit rename, and then provide yourself about eight or 10 characters that will show with, again, we need first and last name. For those participating by phone, if they're also using the Zoom app just to follow along, same process. Bert, is there anybody who'd be participating by phone that manually would have to give them their information verbally?
It appears that person who had their phone number has renamed themselves correctly.
Okay, all right. So we look like we're ready to go?
This is Eric. This is Eric. There's one that said 319-981-2062 that is not renamed.
It looks like they have raised their hand.
Right.
The name is Andrea DeVore.
And can you spell that, please?
Yes, Andrea, A-N-D-R-E-A. Last name DeVore, D-E-V as in Victor, O-R-E.
I got it, thank you.
All right. Okay, all right. And again, we appreciate everybody's patience with this. Again, our process for the hearing will be the same, but this just makes it so that everybody's identifiable for the record, so we appreciate that. All right, so we'll go ahead and we will review our agenda. Let's start with, Bert, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair. Well, I take that back. Item number 10 was an appeal at 2560 South East 14th Street that was withdrawn prior to any public notices going out. So there should not be anybody on here to speak on that, but if by chance they are, that public hearing will not occur today.
Okay.
Otherwise, we just have items one through three that we'll consider on the consent agenda first, and then we will consider a request for continuance for items four through eight.
Okay, so what we'll do then, we'll go ahead and look at that consent agenda. I gave a review of that earlier, but to help the audience out, the items on the consent agenda, items one, two, and three, we are going to consider those for approval, subject to the staff recommendations and then the conditions staffs recommended, unless there's a member in the audience that is in opposition to granting those appeals, or if there's a member of this board that would be in opposition. If so, we would have to hear that item and take testimony on it. So I'm going to go ahead and go over these. Item one is a zoning exception request in the vicinity of 688 East Street by Principal Mutual Life Insurance. Item two is a conditional use permit request for teach-out properties at 432 East Locust Street. And item three is an appeal at 3323 Ingersoll Avenue related to a settlement agreement by the applicant. So is there anybody here in the audience that is opposed to granting approvals for items one, two, or three? If there are, we just need you to hit the raise hand or star nine on your phone. We'll recognize you, and then we'd just like to know what item you are not in agreement with for granting the requested appeal, and then we will hear that separately. So anybody here in opposition to granting approvals for items one, two, or three? Again, please raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on your phone to be recognized. And we'll kind of do this like Jeopardy, clock running out. I'll have staff monitor that. So going once, going twice. Okay, doesn't look like we have any buyers. So, members of the board, if there is further discussion, we can have that. If not, would there be a motion to grant approval of items one, two, and three, subject to staff recommendation?
This is Marla, I so hope.
Is there a second?
This is Cindy Smith. I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Marla, the second by Cindy, to do yea or nay on granting the motion for a board vote. We will go through roll call here, and I think Tyler will help us with that.
Nathan Blake. Cindy Smith.
Aye.
Marla Jones.
Aye.
Dave Gare.
Aye.
Mel Penns.
Aye.
Dave, are you with us?
Aye.
Is Dave muted?
Yeah. Yeah, he has to unmute himself. I can't unmute him.
I think he's there. Dave, can you speak again? Do we have a yea or nay from you?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, there he is.
All right.
Lynn Carlson.
And is that a yea or nay, Lynn?
Oh, I'll say yea, but I wasn't called on, so I didn't know if you guys thought I wasn't here or what.
Sorry about that, Lynn.
It's okay.
Because I'm supposed to be last, right? I always pick up the end of the train here. Okay, so Tyler, do we have everyone has provided a vote? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. So if you were here for items one, two, or three, those have been approved, subject to the conditions and the staff recommendation, and you can check back in with Permit Development Center if you need a building permit for any of those approvals, and you will receive a written copy of the signed approval. So for those of you here for items one, two, or three, your portion of the hearing is concluded, and thank you for tuning in. This will then bring us to the first item on our regular portion of the agenda, which is item four, which is an appeal determination at 1922 Ingersoll Avenue.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is Bert Droste, planner for the city of Des Moines. The applicant for items number four, five, six, seven, and eight has requested a continuance until the July 22nd zoning board of adjustment meeting.
Now, Bert, if I remember correctly, we had granted them previously a 60-day extension from the initial time this was to be heard. Is that correct?
Yes, it was originally on the March agenda, however, the March agenda was canceled and deferred to April 22nd. Then on the April 22nd agenda, it was requested for continuance for two months, which was granted, which brings us to today.
Remind us of the reasoning behind the request for the continuance.
I would defer to the applicant, but my understanding is they are wanting continuance so that it could potentially be heard when the board is able to meet in some again.
Okay. From a procedural perspective, before we look at any continuance, would it be appropriate to have somebody from the appellant just address us briefly with the reasoning for the continuance request?
Yes, I believe that would be appropriate.
Okay, can we go ahead and recognize and allow that appellant to speak? And we just need their name, address is appropriate, and that'll give you a couple minutes here as might be needed with your reasoning for your request for continuance. Looks like Will Reasoner's got his hand raised to speak for the appellant. Can somebody recognize Will?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Will.
Okay. Will Reasoner with the Dickinson Law Firm. Our address is 699 Walnut Street, Suite 1600 in Des Moines, Iowa 50309.
Aye.
And...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Represent Lamar Outdoor Advertising of Iowa Incorporated. Again, we have items number four through eight on today's agenda. In discussions with the city attorney, we requested a continuance so that we have the opportunity to present our cases in person. Again, we've got a fairly substantial amount of evidence and argument to present that would be much better suited by an in-person hearing. And to my understanding, that the city staff is not opposing my request for continuance. We're certainly prepared to proceed. However, we would request continuance, and I guess if the board is concerned about another continuance, maybe we could get some clarity now that there'll be no further continuances except for good cause or something along those lines.
Sure, sure. Well, Will, I very much appreciate that. As I said at our April meeting, and of course hindsight is 2020, none of us were quite sure how long we would have to quote "not meet in person." And as we have seen, you know, things are not necessarily, certainly not back to normal. We may not be sure when they are back to normal, or there could be a new normal where we don't simply have everyone, you know, get together in person, seven members of this board, all staff, et cetera. City council, other boards and commissions, and other government bodies statewide have been using video conferencing quite often here and still meeting the legal requirements of the law. The concern I've got, Will, is I can't guarantee you when we will be able to meet in person. And secondarily, the purpose of the zoning board of adjustment is to listen to concerns with the implementation of the zoning ordinance, but that ordinance is here to carry out the community's comprehensive plan for what the citizens want to see with the character of their community as far as development and compliance with our development requirements. So I'm a little wary of kicking the can down the road until we can all meet in person, not necessarily for one side of the issue or the other, but truly for the concern of the intent of the public, which is us as citizens, so that if there are concerns with compliance, we have a chance to hear those and rule accordingly.
May I speak to that just very briefly? So this is an appeal from a determination from a zoning enforcement officer on the application of zoning law. This is not a request for a conditional use permit. It's not a request for any variance. And so I guess nothing is being done in the meantime, so the only party that could be experiencing any prejudice by a continuance is Lamar. And because we've requested the continuance, I don't think that there's any prejudice to Lamar, the board, or the community at large.
Well, I'll let my colleagues help decide that, but on a secondary note, you said you wanted to meet in person because you had a substantial amount of evidence and arguments or discussion, to paraphrase it, that you wanted to present. I do want to remind you that our online hearing process is exactly the same for time management. Applicants are allowed up to 10 minutes to present their case on their specific item. So meeting in person doesn't grant a greater deal of necessarily time than it would be if we're doing this as we are today. The timer ticks the same way. I don't have the timer on now because this is just about discussing your reasoning for a continuance only. I guess from my perspective, Will, as you had noted, you know, it sounds like a continuance of at least 30 days is something that you're proposing here. I guess at this stage, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I kind of want to put us on the warning track that we are now further down the road. I don't know that we'll be returning to any new normal soon, and any procedures that do change probably will not be the same. So I would just have a concern of having this hang out here for too long of a period. If there weren't concerns with a violation or implementation of this ordinance, then the city staff wouldn't have been dealing with you on this issue. So what I'm going to do here for the moment, Will, is I'm going to see if my colleagues have any other questions for you in regard to your continuance, and then poll them for what they'd like to do. Does that sound okay?
Yes, that's fine, and I would... I'm fine with, you know, a one-month continuance with the understanding that no further continuances will be granted except for good cause, you know, in the case that there's some emergency, but no routine continuances. That way, we've got more time to prepare, although I am prepared to present today if necessary.
Okay, all right. And we do certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Will.
Mr. Chair, this is your legal counsel, Judy Parks Cruz. May I ask just one question of clarification momentarily?
Please do.
Just so we don't have to repeat the conversation four more times, can we just confirm with Mr. Reasoner that we are considering the same question for all of the items for Lamar rather than doing it individually for each of the items?
Will? Yeah, so in other words, if we decide for continuance on item four, will phrase us so we'd be continuing items four through eight? Is that correct?
Yes, everything that I have said is with the understanding that I'm speaking for items four through eight, and I'm not changing anything based on that.
Very good, thank you. And additionally, if I might, Mr. Chair and members listening, Mr. Reasoner had indicated the city's position on this is to not object, and I want to confirm that from the city's point of view. We are in a time of change in terms of what is possible because of the expiration of the current proclamation, so there is a very good likelihood that something different will be in place a month from now, and for all of us to be able to react to that in the meantime, the city does not object to a continuation of these cases.
Okay, and Judy, just for the record, the proclamation you refer to, there was a governor's proclamation that allowed for, I believe, kind of what I want to call the online remote hearings, but that's due to expire unless the governor renews it or changes what those procedures might be that are allowable. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair, so the audience understands what we are talking about. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure, great, okay.
And Mr. Chair, this is Bert. Again, it appears Justin Gross, one of the board members, has his hand raised.
Excellent, yes, yeah, so let's turn this over to our board members for questions, Will, if they have any, or general discussion before we decide this continuance. Justin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would say that I would be in favor of just a one-month continuance, but that would be kind of the final continuance given.
Okay, so that's just kind of on the discussion phase here, but yeah, I get it. Any other thoughts from the board, and subject to that, if somebody would want to make a motion, they can. And I don't know, Judy, you may need to help us. While I appreciate Justin's intent, as well as I think he was on my page, if we make a continuance motion, we can't necessarily make that with any caveats, can we, about no further continuances?
No, I think what we would need to do, if we get, if you do grant the motion, and then we come to the next hearing date, and there has been some situation which an additional continuance is needed for good cause, as Mr. Reasoner has indicated, we would entertain that at that point, just as we would for any other applicant.
Right, right. I'd probably say, as I mentioned, our hearing's being recorded, so perhaps, you know, the concerns and intentions are clear, but if the issue before us is what's at hand, which is a continuance for 30 days, then that's what we'll evaluate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments or a motion from the board members? Okay, would there be a motion to grant a continuance at the request of the applicant here? I'll go ahead and make that motion just to kick us off, a 30-day continuance till the next regularly scheduled hearing date for the board of adjustment.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that. This is Justin Gross.
Okay, so motion by Mel, second by Justin. I'll have Tyler do roll call, say yea or nay in granting the continuance.
Cindy Smith.
Yea.
Marla Jones.
Yea.
Lynn Carlson.
Yea.
Dave Gare.
Yea.
Justin Gross.
Yea.
Nathan Blake.
Yea.
And Mel Penns.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, and that is for items four through eight. Just want to make that clarification for the record. Okay, all right, well, Will, for today, that takes care of that.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and log off. I am understanding that I'm done. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, we're done with your agenda items, and we're prepared to move on to our and we're prepared to move on to our last item, which would be item nine.
Thank you, board.
You're very welcome, have a good afternoon. Okay, item nine is a conditional use permit request at six thousand eleven and six thousand fifteen Grand Avenue, and I think, uh, Mr. Lundey's gonna give us the background on this one.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Eric Lundey, senior city planner. Uh, this is a request after having rezoned the property that's being developed, uh, with buildings, uh, to the east, to the MX one district, and then, uh, the remaining portion, uh, was kept as flood district, that was within the one-hundred-year flood hazard area, uh, based on the firm map, uh, federal insurance rate map system. But that portion is also under consideration here. Three different things, uh, a request for the development of a small, uh, assembly and entertainment venue. Small basically means anything under twelve, uh, thousand square feet, um, I'm sorry, under two thousand, uh, feet or occupant. In this case, the zoning, uh, conditions have limited it to a three hundred occupant maximum for event. Uh, the, this also allows development of that flood district area for the, for a surface parking lot in the, in the, um, flood district area that would support the use on the adjoining, uh, MX one district. And then they are also looking to hold their own, um, liquor license, which would, uh, require a conditional use for a business selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and/or beer. This is the subject property. You can see I'm gonna run the cursor over the boundary that sort of separates the flood district area and the MX one area. So the buildings being proposed are all gonna be over in this southeast corner and up in this area. The remaining would be the area for the parking, um, and some open space area. A lot of that would probably be for their stormwater management. Uh, this is looking from the southwest corner of the subject property to the northeast. Uh, you can see the former nursery, uh, buildings, um, kinda swinging around a little further on Grand Avenue, looking straight, more straight north on the western portion of the property. Um, this is the office building on the eastern, uh, portion of the property, looking from Grand to the north. A little bit further east. This is looking to the southeast from the, you see the first household, uh, the northwest corner of the property, subject property. Then kind of going down to the south, a little bit looking further east. So you see the back buildings of the nursery property.
Can you make that just a shade larger for us all?
Yeah, I'm gonna, this is the
There we go.
Response in the application, well, from the applicant, uh, that they provided. I know it's small, I can zoom in on it one more time.
Yeah, that's pretty good, thank you.
I gotta, I'll give you some time to take a glance at it. It's basically describing their project.
Okay.
And summarizes their intent, basically, and I don't think, I think they've been pretty, uh, upfront with, um, communication with neighbors what their intentions are, but I'll let, you know, everyone respond accordingly.
Right, okay.
This kind of shows existing, uh, conditions. This shows, again, you see the blue line is the, the flood boundary essentially. It's showing the placement of the building footprint they're proposing. At the time, again, you're not, you're not approving or considering the actual physical development, of the site, uh, but this is their, their, um, sketch to show you their intentions. They've got some stormwater management up at the top and parking. And then this is, gives a little better feel for the landscape schemes that they're proposing to conform with the requirements in chapter one thirty-five. We'll discuss that a little bit and what staff is recommending. There's a little bit of, uh, upgrade to that to, to sort of mitigate this use away from the neighborhood, uh, that staff is going to recommend. And we can flip back to this if we need to, uh, if, if the request of the board or the applicant.
Yeah, we, we, we may wanna come back to that site plan in a few minutes, yeah.
This would be the concept elevation of what's being, uh, oriented towards Grand Avenue, of the, the main assembly hall. This would be on the north side, you can see at the main level, there would be, you know, double entry doors that people come out onto an area, uh, kind of to get to the patio to the west. And then the, the east elevation would face, uh, Sixtieth Street, I believe, and then the west would be oriented towards the parking lot. Again, those, those doors would probably be the main, uh, access point for guests, for any event. And then there's another little building proposed to the north that they're showing elevation for, that'd be a little shed-style building. That's actually up in this area. The other thing I should point out is they do have some site limitations also due to a major sewer, public sewer that runs through this property, east to west, so they're having to sort of keep out of any easement of that. They can't put any buildings over that. The zoning ordinance that the council adopted, um, I just wanted to present that. There are some conditions, um, starting here, and I'm gonna zoom in again so people can read. You're probably not too interested in the lengthy legal description, but I can get it to stop here where I want it, okay? So, it has, uh, first condition was A, any assembly of persons shall be limited to three hundred persons or less at one time, um, even if the area of the building would, you know, under the building code would allow for additional occupancy, their, their use is, under the zoning condition is limited to that three hundred maximum. Um, then it says the assembly uses allowed would be events such as weddings, ceremonies, receptions, celebrations of life, graduation receptions, baby showers, engagement parties, anniversary celebrations, birthday parties, reunions, fundraisers, charity events, galas, silent and live auctions, corporate events, holiday parties, neighborhood meetings and gatherings, chamber events, festivals, cultural celebrations, food and beverage tastings, pop-up food and beverage events, community engagement events, cooking classes, religious ceremonies and services, political events, speaking engagements, business meetings. I'll let you read, you know, there's a sort of a category. I think the big, um, the big thing to kinda take away from this is that it wouldn't necessarily really be the type of event center where you would have like a, a live band performance solely as the, as the you know, where you're, you know, a medium-sized national act would come or something and have a, their concert, for example.
Right, so this would be like Woolies or Hoyt Sherman Place?
Right, where it's predominantly for the, the purpose of, you know, seeing the, the music.
Gotcha.
Act, but, um, but it would, I mean, isn't it, so then it says live music would be able to accompany the assembly uses that are listed. So, you know, a wedding reception had a band, yes, that would.
Got it.
And it did limit to the hours of operation, uh, Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to ten PM, and then Fridays from eight AM to midnight, so, uh, a little bit later on the weekend evening. Then notwithstanding, uh, those hours, they also allowed anything on public holidays to mimic the Friday and Saturday night limits at eight AM to midnight. And it lists the public holidays specifically that are, that are being, uh, considered. That's, that was the limitations of the zoning. Staff report is laid out with the applicable standards that are for the three different conditional use types. And then give, goes through the criteria for each of those. They get to have a neighborhood meeting, um, and I think they had a separate meeting again since the rezoning that they offered, um, and I'll let them kind of go into that. They provided a summary that, that you could look at if you need to look at that. They did that by a virtual meeting, um, so, where they included all of those owners within two hundred and fifty, and the neigh- the, the Waterbury and Westwood Neighborhood Association. There's some general criteria in the zoning ordinance, uh, that are applicable to consideration of conditional uses that are listed in your staff report, one through nine. Then the staff report also includes, again, what we went over with the ordinance for the conditions of the zoning that was adopted on May fourth. The permit development center wants to make it clear that, uh, any development of this site is essentially subject to all building codes, um, and, uh, uh, site plan ordinance. They're proceeding right now for, uh, they would have options under the MX one zoning for different building types, but everything you're, you've been shown conceptually, I think is really under the way the ordinance would treat the commercial cottage building type. Again, all those things need permits and site plan approval before, uh, site plan approval, building code review, and, uh, permit before they can begin constru- uh, construction.
Okay.
Saff kind of reviewed all of this information, um, in, in taking the direction of the council on the conditions of zoning. There's definitely been, uh, input expressed by neighbors, uh, with, you know, they obviously still have concerns about the impacts that this development will have if it's allowed to have a assembly venue, um, have a liquor, uh, license for the premise rather than catering in, which they would be able to do if they didn't have that separate, um, they would be able to cater in separately for events, uh, with somebody that did have liquor license, uh, signed temporarily here. And then, uh, the third thing with the flood, uh, plane considerations, I should point out even under our old code requirements, that, that parking in flood, uh, affected areas was something that the board considered from time to time. So it's not unusual that parking as a use that can be done without having, uh, severe impacts on the floodplain, and is able to follow the floodplain development, uh, regulations, rather easily compared to something that would be of a structure nature. The new zoning code doesn't permit, uh, structures generally, unless there's something for utilities or public purpose in the floodplain, uh, without a rezoning or, or, um, looking at adjusting the, the flood map and then getting rezoning. The neighbors did express a number of things. They've, they've been negotiating, I think, with the applicant to, uh, come to some memorandum of agreement, or good neighbor agreement is what it's being called, I believe. A number of the things in there, uh, include a lot of operational aspects to it, including how they carry their insurance, um, in releasing liability on, on neighbors, things that I think that are very difficult to enforce as zoning conditions. A number of them, so, while, while the good neighbor agreement, and, and I don't believe that there's been an actual, uh, come to terms on that, they, there's been some discussion and, and an offering on the part of the neighbors as to what they would wanna see. Then we'll probably mention those things. But Saff really wanted to focus on the impacts that we believe we can manage through zoning, uh, process and enforceable, uh, conditions of these conditional use, uh, granting. But there's a feeling that the, if there's going to be alcohol on this, uh, premise, that the, uh, it's probably better managed through a conditional use for that versus, uh, the transfer of, uh, catering licenses from time to time, that, uh... The other thing I wanna point out is, um, when considering conditions, uh, with you, you, in the past, you know there's been limitations as to how you can adjust how a liquor license is, is, um, operated. But in this case, you also have the assembly use, so I think if there's operational things that the board wants to consider, uh, maybe on top of what Saff is recommending, that they really look at those as conditions of the granting of the assembly use versus more directly to the, um, business selling liquor. Not to say there aren't some things that would be directly tied to that, but, um, in terms of the enforcement and then the, uh, in terms of having issues with state code about granting of liquor licenses, throwing out something, I think it's easier to regulate, uh, the conditions as part of the assembly.
Got it.
So, again, uh, Saff did not latch on to all the, uh, proposed types of, um, concessions that they wanted, uh, the developer to make, but we did get a flavor for the, uh, concerns and how, what things, uh, would possibly need to be mitigated. So, um, Saff is recommending approval of those requested conditional uses for assembly and entertainment mall, uh, in an MX district, to allow the off, onsite parking or surface parking lot used in an F flood district, and then, uh, a business selling liquor, wine, and/or beer in an MX district, subject to the condition. The first one is the adherence to all of the conditions that are already part of the zoning. And that's in there because then this gives us additional ability to enforce and bring back a conditional use if they're also violating the conditions of the zoning. So, that, you're gonna see some things that point to already, uh, they're in our ordinances, uh, other city ordinances, but again, by pulling them into the conditional use conditions, then we are also able to, uh, bring something back to the board if there's issues with compliance with those other portions of the code as well. So you will see that we've taken in whole compliance with the conditions of the rezoning. Number two is the compliance with chapter fifty floodplain development regulations of the city code and development of the onsite parking and other improvements that would be part of the site plan within that floodplain area. Uh, compliance with all building codes and site plan ordinance requirements. So if, if they have something where they're violating, uh, provisions that were part of the approval of the site plan, that could also be constituted then as a violation of this, uh, decision. Free removal in article ten of chapter forty-two, noise control in article four of chapter forty-two, and then, we did forty-two, and then we did want to drill a little bit into the noise, uh, element and recommend that due to the close proximity of the neighborhood area, that we would, um, want to see special soundproofing measures, uh, integrated into their development. Uh, I think you're gonna hear that they're already proposing a number of these things. Um, we're, we're staying at sta, standard levels that are appropriate for the satisfaction of the city building official. Any outdoor activities related to events shall be limited to an area that is no further, uh, than north, a hundred feet north of the south property line along Grand Avenue, and that essentially is everything, uh, south of a line that, that's really kind of on the north side of the building.
Okay.
Any outdoor, it does allow them probably to get out those doors on the north side, but not really, you know, give them a, a large area to conduct any activity. I know that the neighbors are gonna push for no outside activities, um, staff recommended that be limited to, um, that area one hundred feet, uh, north of the line, along, property line along Grand. Uh, any outdoors activities shall cease at least one hour prior to the closing of business within the permitted hours of operation. So whatever they choose for their hours of operation, uh, within their closing of the business for the day, they need to cease the, uh, outdoor activities. If they're extending to the full allowance of the zoning conditions for the permitted hours of operation, they need to cease the outside activities at least one hour before that, so, on weekends and holidays, that would be eleven o'clock at night, um, on, uh, regular, uh, weekdays and Sundays, uh, that would be the, that would be nine o'clock in the evening. Um, again, I think maybe the board will hear that this isn't gonna, you know, be okay with the neighbors, but, and, and that can certainly be adjusted, uh, staff's recommending, uh, as you see there. Then any sales and service and consumption of liquor is limited to only within a building or within a fenced patio area that is outside the flood district on the property. Uh, any sales shall cease at least one hour prior to closing of business, uh, within the permitted hours of operation. So the same thing, liquor sales will cease one hour before they close down.
Mm-hmm.
Any outdoor amplified music shall be limited to that, no greater than what is permitted with issuance of a Type C sound permit. That is the background auditory, uh, type allowance that you see on, uh, outside patios for restaurants.
Mm-hmm.
Number ten is any required side or rear buffer required by the chapter one thirty-five in the review of the site plan shall meet the heavy buffer plant material requirement as typically required for the MX and CX districts, which are more highway, commercial-type districts. Um, this buffer, uh, shall also include the property line area parallel between any assembly building and adjoining residential property. That's to say, uh, normally that buffer would only be applicable to the parking areas, but we also want to extend it to that line between the building, uh, that they're proposing and the, the residential area to the north, so we want that heavy buffer plant material requirement. So that's the condition, uh, that we're recommending. I'm gonna go back to the map to kind of give you some clarification, uh, of what we're talking about here on the-
Yep.
So that heavy buffer would essentially be all along-
Right.
This area here, and that would be a higher amount of the plant material than would be required typically in the MX, uh, district, um-
Mm-hmm.
And ho, hopefully help with, uh, sound absorption. That hundred feet, uh, is essentially right here. So, there is a little area as you come out these doors to get over here, but in general, the, kind of, any outside area that would be used for activities would be on this patio area here, uh, or this open space area over here, which is the part, portion of the site which is furthest away from the neighborhood. Again, staff is recommending the allowance for those outside activities, uh, to occur, uh, up to an hour before they have, have to close.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna get them to the comments. I do have the neighborhood meeting, uh, summary if they need to refer to it. Uh, these are the, we did get six cards and an email that I'm gonna show you, and I'm gonna give you enough time to read them. I'm gonna zoom out just a little bit here, just so you read them in their entirety. I'm gonna go back 'cause I wanna make sure I had each of those cards.
Eric, this is Nathan.
Yeah.
Did you say that the, the neighborhood associations had weighed in?
I did not get anything, unless Bert knows of something, I didn't, I don't believe there was anything from the, um, I did have a conversation with a representative of the neighborhood association, uh, Thomas McBride, but I don't believe that the-
Right.
We got anything written.
And the neighborhood associations are sent the notice as well as a card they can return if they want to comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, so the fact that I got contacted tells me that they were, that they received their notification. They also get an, they also get an agenda of the whole meeting sent to all of the-
Well, and it may be possible that perhaps one of them wishes to speak today here, we'll see.
Yeah.
Eric, do you have more cards, or are you just kind of summarizing those again?
No, I went through them because it was only, it was, when I clicked the page, it wasn't getting a one at the bottom, and I wanted to make sure we had all of them, so-
Sure. Do, do you have that there, yeah, I was just gonna say, do you have the area map of where the comment cards came from? Okay.
Yes, and this doesn't show John Texters, uh, that came in after the map was produced, so it's easier to-
And he's located where?
Um-
North northwest there, whoop. He's on the north side of the-
Yeah.
And he's the first property just to the north there, um- Yep. Okay. All right.
And he, he indicated in, uh, I believe in favor in that email.
Okay. And remind us, um, what street parking is allowed on the two side streets, west and east side of the property?
I think it's the east side on both of those streets at the moment.
Okay. All right.
Just one side.
Yeah.
Um, there's been some discussion of maybe the neighbors petitioning to have it removed, but I think that's a double-edged sword for them because, you know, then they don't have the benefit of it either.
Right, okay. And, all right, anything else, Eric?
I don't have anything, but I'm definitely, uh, open to answering any questions about, you know, what the staff recommendations are, so-
Um, board members, any questions for Eric?
Hey Eric, this is Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Hey, um, how many parking spots are we requiring for this?
Um, it, it depends on what they end up with their actual, um, occupancy, but if you think at one per six, six feet, uh, on the three hundred, um, it would be, uh, shoot, I had it, I think it's forty-two total when you also incorporate the office, let me double check. They, they're allowed to go up to a hundred and twenty percent of that minimum under the MX one zoning. Um, they also have the ability to count any on-street parking that's adjacent to their site, and that, I think, would only be on the west, uh, proper, uh, west street side if, uh, along that west, uh, parking there.
So, um, help me understand here, how many spots then could they, are they gonna be, are we gonna require them to have?
Uh, let me see here, hold on.
Have, have you figured it, if they wanted the maximum occupancy to be three hundred, haven't you calculated and reversed that?
Yeah, so they're gonna be around sixty-two, I think, with the office that they're proposing too, but again, until we get the actual square footages.
Right.
Um, and, you know, that, they've, if you took that then and made the, you know, made it a hundred and twenty percent of that, they'd be about seventy-five spaces, would be, they'd actually have to get relieved to go more than seventy-five spaces, under the chapter one thirty-five provision.
Because, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but in an odd way, we've changed the zoning ordinance to now want to minimize parking lot size rather than maximize it, is that correct?
That's correct, and that's, a lot of that to try to reduce the amount of paved area that creates stormwater problems, yeah.
Yeah.
And not overpark, uh, uses as well.
Right, so, good, bad, or indifferent, Dave, it's a different way of thinking. Um, they're, ba, basically the new ordinance doesn't want too much parking spaces available.
Well, I guess I'm curious, 'cause at a venue like this, they're, they're gonna be probably attendees that are gonna exceed these numbers, so that we're gonna be counting street spots and-
Right.
Serious kind of-
Right.
Yeah.
It's up to me, so, I'll just, I'll just hold the rest of my comments, I was just curious kind of what we were looking at.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I guess if they're gonna max it out, they're gonna run around seventy-five. When this came through the zoning, rezoning process, they were talking about a potential for a larger venue of seven thousand square feet, which would have had a, a higher occupancy, which would have probably put it more into the range of ninety spaces potentially if you maxed that out, so, you know, what people were initially seeing through this process was a lot more parking, um, with only three hundred, um, people allowed for events, that's gonna reduce the, the demand on parking too, a, as well as the requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
My comments after we get into our discussion, thanks.
Very good, David. Um, other questions for Eric from the board? I'll stay going once, going twice here, anybody else from the board with any questions? Okay, hey Eric, I've just got a couple of quick ones here, um, I think I heard it mentioned, and it may or may not have been in your staff report, um, was this site in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning for this requested use, and then was it in front of City Council as well, and if so, was, I'm assuming that, that those requests were approved, is that correct?
Yeah, so that, that was the rezoning to the, to the MX one area, and that was that ordinance that I, that I showed with the, the zoning condition.
So, so that was a-
That was in front of both Plan and Zoning Commission and City Council.
And both approved, and I'm assuming that that general site plan was part of that P and Z and council consideration of kind of, hey, here's how it's gonna look, is that correct?
They have, the, the, the concept was adjusted somewhat to what they submitted for this, um-
Yeah.
Because of the limitations that were put on them through the zoning, um-
Right.
I think they went back and, and adjusted, uh, so it's a little different than what was shown and through the zoning process.
But yet, I would assume for simplicity's sake, it's no more expansive than what would have been shown at P and Z or council, is that correct?
Yes, I think it's actually kind of reduced somewhat.
Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, um, and I guess that's the only questions I have, so I'll just do this once more, anybody else have any questions for Eric from the board? Okay, seeing none, uh, first time we would have done this today, um, so now we turn it over to the appellant, um, they will have up to ten minutes to address the board, uh, with their reasoning for their conditional use permit request, and I give Eric credit while he's just giving the staff report, I think he gave a pretty thorough explanation of kind of the layout, the look, what this is going to be, uh, but for the applicant, this is your ten minutes to use however you want, um, so to kick that off, we would just need your, uh, name and address, and if you've not already been recognized, click the raise hand button, and we'll have staff recognize you, and you've got the floor. All right. Staff, who's asking to speak here, do we got them recognized?
Yep, I'm on.
Okay.
Taylor Bowden, um, my office located at thirty-eight oh one Ingersoll Avenue, um, in Des Moines. Um, so first off, I would like to thank the board members for their time today, as well as all the neighbors, um, and thank you to Eric Lundee for explaining everything, um, I might be repeating a couple of things, but just again, wanted to give a little bit more clarification, um, on the different, uh, details for the project. Um, like I mentioned, my name is Taylor Bowden, I'm owner of White Willow Events, which is a local wedding and event planning company, uh, I specialize in weddings, but also plan other monumental events. My next adventure has been the new site we are discussing today, Willow on Grand, which will be located at sixty-eleven and sixty-fifteen here in Avenue. Um, Willow on Grand will be primarily a wedding and event venue, we do see other events such as, but not limited to yoga on the lawn, corporate galas, fundraisers, movie nights, et cetera, um, taking place there as well. Although we will offer a wide array of events, weddings have always been my forte, and they will continue to be at the new space. Willow on Grand will fit the coin term, a commercial cottage, to ensure that it will fit, fit in seamlessly with the historic charm of the neighborhood. The front of the building will be white with black windows, we plan to keep as many trees as possible, we'll also be doing extensive landscaping on all sides of the space to ensure the building fits seamlessly within the watered neighborhood from each vantage point. We are proposing a fifty-five hundred square foot building, which would predominantly host, um, several events. Before zoning approval with the city council, we agreed to heavily restrict the types of events that would be held at Willow on Grand. The zoning ordinance we agreed to does not apply only to Willow on Grand, but also runs with the land and would apply to subsequent owners. Based on the zoning ordinance, we agree to do the following. First one, as I've mentioned before, capacity, uh, so assembly of persons is limited to three hundred, um, assembly uses, I won't go into all the different events, but, um, you know, weddings, ceremonies, and receptions, celebrations of life, et cetera, uh, but again, highlighting again that live music shall not be permitted to accompany, live music shall not be permitted, um, but concerts where live music performed for profit is the main event shall not be permitted. Three hours of operation shall be limited as follows, Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to ten PM, and then Friday and Saturday, eight AM to twelve AM. At this time, I would also like to clarify how we plan to go about the items listed for board of adjustments. Um, the first item is parking, the parking in the flood zone, um, we are required to hit a hundred percent of the number of parking stalls required for the occupancy limits of the space, and based on our numbers, uh, this is fifty-two spaces. With our current square footage, we have sixty-two spaces on our site plan, which maxes it out at a hundred and twenty percent, which, um, I'm under, understanding that this is the max allowed on the property. Um, unless anything else comes up with the city, this is potentially what we are planning to do. Outside of board of adjustments, um, it is our intent to have two lots that will be used, uh, depending on the need, so we have, um, we've been in talks with Michael Halsworth in his lots to the east, and then also the lot, um, across the street just to- and then also the lot, um, across the street just to the south. In addition, shuttles or valet services will be subcontracted if needed, and this would be on a per-event basis, and on, based off of the size as well. Um, parking's very important, not only myself and the neighbors, but anyone who books the space. So we're working to come up with a variety of options to ensure enough parking on an event-by-event basis. We will continue to consider additional options and rework as necessary once the space is up and running. The second item is, uh, building use in MX one district. So the city's in favor of the small event space, the biggest caveat is limiting the size from two thousand to three hundred, which has already been done in the conditions via the rezoning. We agreed to a zoning condition that substantially limited our use of the facility, whereas a small event space could've maxed out at two thousand, we agreed to max out at three hundred. In addition, we have also put a limit on hours of operation, and we have limited type, and we have limited the types of events being held at the space, heavily restricting our use of the space in an effort to quell the neighbors' concerns. Item number three, liquor license, um, like Eric mentioned before, we are able to have taters bring in liquor on-site to have their license. However, in order to control, uh, the amount consumed, we're requiring all liquor sales to go through the business itself, instead of any outside party, parties or the client themselves. As it stands, the liquor license is for small event space, liquor, beer, and wine will only be served with events they're being held. The above references items that will be resolved during the formal municipal process. Two weeks ago, we hosted a, uh, virtual neighborhood meeting. During this time, the Good Neighborhood Agreement was brought up again. I think it's important to note that many neighbors who strongly oppose the project and continue to request the Good Neighbor Agreement have also indicated that they will never support Willow and Grand. Regardless, I continue to proactively approach the project, amending plans to adhere to the neighbors' requests, easing their concerns, and building a facility that will aesthetically match the neighborhood it surrounds. It is our belief that the majority of issues presented in the neighbors' draft of the Good Neighbor Agreement will also be addressed through the formal process of the Board of Adjustment and other laws and regulations, which Willow and Grand is already subject to, such as the Building Code and city ordinances. A private agreement between the neighbors and Willow and Grand regarding these items defeats the spirit of the municipal bodies and rules and regulations that have already governed business owners in the city of Des Moines. City staff has indicated that Good Neighbor Agreements tend to be rare, and is my understanding that such agreements typically apply to bad actors after the fact. At this time, while a Good Neighborhood, excuse me, while a Good Neighbor Agreement is not permanently off the table, I would like the opportunity to be subject to same rules and conditions as other business owners in the city. What I will commit to say is working with the neighbors to develop a complaint process for issues they have with Willow and Grand, which facilitates a collaborative review of the neighbors' concerns to be considered and resolved in a timely manner. Of course, if any additional issues arise once the property is built and events have started, I would consider a Good Neighbor Agreement that further restricts our operations at Willow and Grand beyond what we have already committed to with zoning ordinance. However, at this time, I would like the opportunity to show the neighbors, um, and the city of Des Moines, that it is my every intention to be not just a good neighbor, but a great one. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Um, so the way this works at this time is, we'll see, um, if our board members have any questions for you, if that's okay, would you be willing to answer a few questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, okay, board members, any questions for Taylor?
Hi Taylor, this is Cindy Smith, I was just wondering if you had any other, um, physical locations for your business, or if this would be the first actual structured physical location?
Um, so my office is currently out of Bowden Forest on Ingersoll, so I renovated that back space, it's, um, pretty small, but we posted a couple of like small bridal showers. Um, but we do go to a lot of different properties around the Des Moines area, but physically, this can be our largest space that we have built yet.
Other questions? Taylor, I've just got a couple I wanna throw at you, I mean, we've all been, uh, fa- familiar with going to different venues for weddings, or receptions, or, or what have you, and they're always fun. Um, when, when we get to sound, um, the city's basically saying that your outdoor sound of any music, whether, um, you know, however it's audible, it needs to be background only. So how are you preparing, or what do you envision for any outdoor sound you'll have?
So, I mean, any of the outdoor sound, we're not planning to have any DJs out there or any loud amplified music, obviously, we wanna make sure we're, um, in compliance with the, the noise ordinance. Um, the only sound that we really see happening again is just small background music for maybe a cocktail hour, um, or maybe a string quartet for a wedding ceremony. Um, but outside of that, you don't see any loud am- loud amplified music outdoors.
So, for lack of a better analogy, I call it like, uh, there'd be a little muzak through some speakers, maybe just some background stuff, and that'd be all you'd have. I, I know you mentioned like a string quartet, but you're, you're not gonna have a big percussion band outside or anything like that.
Right.
Okay, so, related question, again, we've all been to events. Even with extra soundproofing, if you have a live performance inside, even a DJ or amplified music, everybody likes to have that, you know, you gotta have a little volume to make it enjoyable. So on a nice night, it would be easy for guests and those attending to kick the doors open and block them open. Um, how, how are you planning to keep that sound within the building?
So all, the majority of all the windows, um, aren't gonna be functionable, so meaning they're not gonna open up. Um, in terms of the doors, we will have an event coordinator on-site for all events, uh, so that would just be a task that we would give them to monitor and to ensure that those doors aren't picked open.
Right.
And again, summertime being peak wedding season, I know this weekend is gonna be close to ninety degrees, um, we wanna make sure we're keeping it cool in the space as well.
Got it.
So, those are other items that...
Okay. Yeah, I've, I, I've even seen at certain like venues, it's actually marked on the door, do not block door open, you know, stuff like that, so... Okay, um, any other questions, uh, for the moment, from the board?
Uh, this is Nathan Blake, I've got one. Um, and I, I apologize if you address this, I, I missed, uh, a minute or so, so... The staff has recommended, obviously, like a bunch of, uh, pretty detailed restrictions. Were there ones that you weren't comfortable with, or that you would like to be changed? Are you comfortable with all of them?
I believe going through everything, I was comfortable with all of them, I didn't see anything that was red flagged.
Okay, good question. Okay, well, what we'll do at this time, Taylor, well, um, we'll take testimony from others who may be in support or in opposition, but when we're through, uh, with that testimony and our questions, if we have any for staff, then you'll have three minutes for some closing comments, alright?
Okay, thank you.
You bet, you're welcome. Okay, at this time in the hearing, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for the conditional use permit? I see we've got some hands up, um, we're taking comments from those in support at this time, so we can have our moderator go through kind of in order, but again, this is in support only for the moment. And once you're recognized, we need your name, complete name, and your address. Alright, so staff, who gets to go first?
Um, we'll just let Michael Laval go first.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, it's Michael Laval, I live at four thirty-five, uh, Forty-Ninth Street in Des Moines.
Go ahead, you got five minutes.
No, and, uh, for several years, the property has been in full repair. I'm sure it's not generating much in tax revenue, and even the existing building, uh, is, is kind of an eyesore. Uh, this is gonna really improve the block, uh, it's going to, uh, increase property tax base and tourism in the area. Uh, when you think about, uh, the location of this as a wedding venue, I don't think you could find a better location. They're making good use of, um, unusable ground, uh, in flood plain with detention and with parking. Uh, the location is close to many churches and synagogues that, uh, uh, can serve as an entertainment venue after, after ceremony or service. Uh, you've got the art center up there for the out-of-town guests to go visit, and people to have their weddings there and come down to the venue and, and, uh, take pictures and things like that. Hotels and restaurants downtown, uh, Ingersoll, uh, restaurants and entertainment corridor, uh, are all gonna benefit dramatically from, uh, this, uh, wedding venue, because, uh, uh, even though a lot of the people getting married there will have Des Moines roots, a lot of them will be marrying out-of-towners and bringing friends and family far away to, to our fair city. Sure, there are a lot of worse things that could go there. Um, it could be a mixed-use building that has, uh, commercial downstairs and, and, uh, a, a business that might not attract, uh, quality people the wedding center would, with apartments upstairs. And I understand, actually, at one time, maybe there was a, a filling station on one corner of the property. Um, and, and so, I, I, I don't see that, uh, uh, that it's a bad use at all as far as the location and, um, even, and, you know, it's probably only gonna use, um, you know, four to six hours a day on the days that it's even in use. Um, in addition, it's going to improve the tax base, uh, and, uh, and, uh, provide a place, uh, that, uh, the community can gather and, and, uh, and celebrate special occasions. Uh, my building across the street, uh, is not open after five o'clock at night, and, uh, we are certainly willing, if Taylor needs, uh, to, uh, make arrangements to use our parking lot, then, uh, uh, we have ample parking to overflow that, provided that, uh, uh, she can provide a safe way for them to cross the street. With that said, I'm, I'll relinquish the rest of my time and let someone else, uh, uh, speak on behalf of the property, the project.
Alright, thank you very much, uh, looks like, uh, Mr. Norland. And, do we need to unmute Mr. Norland? Or does he need to unmute himself?
Yeah, is that you need to now?
Yes, we've got you now, go ahead.
Okay, so...
Your full name and address.
Okay, my name is James Kermit Norland, my address is five thirty zero eight Grand Avenue. I'm just a little ways outside that, um, requirement. I met Taylor for the first time at one of the media open houses we had. I went to learn about the, uh, project, and that's it, I said, at that point, I just like having an opinion, I didn't know what it was gonna look like. Um, I saw the plan, I was very impressed. I think it's very well done, I think it fits the community very well. I liked the idea of the added activity, the positive activity in that area. Uh, you know, the, every night all summer, uh, except for Sunday night, I get awakened at Grand Avenue when Cal's always closed and all the other guys go drive it down Grand Avenue. Yeah, I think, I think this is a much better use of the property than something like that. Um, you know, Taylor's answered every question that I've heard after her, she's done a great job with that. Uh, she's also taken a lot of heat and beating, uh, and personal attacks that are completely inappropriate, and handled them very well, and just, um, you know, moved on and con- continued to make positive comments about her project, uh, which lead me to believe that she'll do the same thing with the building that's up and running. Uh, from an appearance, I, I can't imagine a better-looking space for that. Uh, the, the old, uh, person, and that old building, it's been not in good shape for a very long time. And, you know, the, the chain link fence around the old, uh, nursery looks like it ought to have used auto parts, uh, that you jump over the fence to steal once a week. And it, and it's, that needs to go. And the fact that that has flood flats, the only way to use it is with something like parking is fantastic. Um, I'm excited that that defense there, if there's something I need to attend, I can just walk. I think that's a great idea, so you won't have to worry about parking my car. Uh, that's it, and, uh, I hope it goes through, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Bitterman? And...
Hello. Hello, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, my name's Russ Bitterman. I'm with IDA Architects, fourteen forty Locust Street, Suite One Hundred. Um, we're the architects for the project. Um, wanna speak a little bit about the building. Um, there was mention about the sound, and we've, we're taking those special steps to make sure that we're providing enough sound mitigation, uh, for the building, uh, for, for the inside sound, not just for the outside. Um, uh, one of the facts is, is, um, you know, it's a, it's a wedding venue. So, uh, the DJ or any kind of, uh, uh, live music in there isn't gonna be loud enough uh, to ground out conversation, that's the best way to, uh, end a wedding reception, in my opinion. Uh, we get some people to kinda stick around. If it's over ninety-five decibels, uh, it becomes a problem, I think, for the event, and Taylor, uh, agrees with that. Um, so, um, we're looking at trying to do thirty, thirty-five, uh, STC windows. Uh, that'll get, uh, the sound that emanates through the windows, um, as they're closed, uh, under the sixty-five decibels required by, uh, the noise ordinance. Uh, the do- the, uh, walls and the roof will already have that capability, it's really the windows and doors that are the, uh, weak point. Um, so we're looking at a combination of heavier glazing or triple-blazed windows, uh, to achieve that. Um, they're readily available, it's usually just an upgrade with most good window systems. Um, so that's, uh, that's what we're doing there. Uh, the building's gonna be wood-framed with, uh, insulation in the, in two-by-six stud walls. Uh, right now, we're looking at a, uh, a, uh, structurally insulated panel roof, so that we can have exposed, uh, joists on the inside. That'll be eight inches thick, which will provide plenty of sound, uh, mitigation from the inside as well. Uh, I'm also a neighbor in the Waterbury area, up on North Waterbury Drive, and, uh, understand what the neighbors, uh, near to this property are worried about, because we've dealt with the Val Air in West Des Moines for a number of years. Uh, I sat on the committee, uh, with West Des Moines, they invited me as a representative of our neighborhood, uh, to, uh, help redo their, their noise ordinance. So I have a pretty good understanding, uh, what happened there and what just happened there. And I also understand how Taylor plans to use this facility. And obviously, they're not the same anyway, because, uh, the sound system at the Val Air is a half million dollar system, uh, pumps out some really low bass, bass sounds, um, and that's just not going to be the case. Uh, this'll be a more, uh, I don't wanna say pedestrian, it'll be a commercial sound system, but it's not going to be something that, a venue for, uh, traveling bands and, uh, rock artists and things like that, so... If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, do we have any questions from the board? Okay, thanks for your further explanation on, uh, the substance here, thank you very much. Okay, um, other comments in support, I think we have, uh, Lindsay? Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Oster, and I live at six zero three four North Waterbury Road, actually, right next door to Mr. Bitterman, and that's by coincidence that he's the architect of the project. But, uh, my... But my comment in support would be primarily to the business character of the applicant, Taylor Bowden. I have known Taylor for many years. She was actually classmates of my daughter. And Taylor has done just amazing with her career in what she has done to be an event planner and a premier event planner in the community of Des Moines. I think that if the board is so kind as to grant her exception, such as requested, that would then give her the tools to go forward and succeed with this event venue. I'm so happy that somebody is finally taking a serious look at this property because it has been vacant for far too many years and has fallen into disrepair. And I applaud her and her willingness and eagerness to invest in the community of Des Moines. So I support her progress. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for leaving with us and sharing your comments. And I think we'll go to, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, or help me, Maya Betcher.
That's great. Hi, am I unmuted?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Maya Betcher. I'm a resident of the Waterbury neighborhood. We live at 72454th Street. I also own an event planning company and a flower shop on Ingersoll called Wildflower. I have known Taylor for several years as a fellow event planner and designer here in Des Moines. I have watched her grow her business quickly over the years and gained the respect of her community as a reputable businesswoman. I can tell you from a lot of experience that the business of event planning requires a huge amount of dedication and responsibility. Seeing Taylor's, seeing firsthand Taylor's capabilities in this industry leaves me with absolutely no concerns that this project's business plan will be very successful. As both a resident and a business owner in this neighborhood, I see the proposed project as having a positive influence in this neighborhood. I would love to see revitalization of this section of the 63rd and Grand area and I can't help but think of all of the community and private events that could be held here, all while keeping event dollars in our local community. Venue outside of downtown and further west, like hotels, leave event planners with the art center, which doesn't allow ceremony inside of the building and only holds 125 guests seated. Outdoor ceremony venue in Iowa is a risk for clients getting married with sticks selling their building at 63rd and South. That leaves very little viable space for assembly in our neck of the woods. With plenty of parking, this venue will be contained with parameters. People think of parties, but events like these are more than this. Each event supports so many industry vendors, workers, and staff. As a competing vendor, Taylor has assured that myself and other vendors are welcome in this space. As a planner, florist, and event designer, this means more business being handled here in my own neighborhood. Taylor has assured me that the concerns of the surrounding neighbors will be taken very seriously with rec measures being put in place so that event heat that gets found will not be an issue. Ending events early during the week and weekend are another measure that will ensure reasonable traffic control. This is not a concentration, but a place for dinners, gatherings, ceremonies, fundraisers, and neighborhood events. As a business owner with like-minded creative ideas, I am thrilled at the notion that this project could go ahead as planned. Des Moines is an exciting town with so much potential for young, passionate business owners. Not only is the building and business idea fantastic, but an example to those hopeful business owners that Des Moines is a community-driven, supportive city to start a business in. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, do we have anybody else that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? If so, we need you to hit the raise hand icon on Zoom. If maybe you're here by phone, you can hit star nine and ask to be recognized. Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak in support? Somebody touched concern. Who do we got there?
Sorry, am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, yes. Do you want to speak in support?
Yeah, great. Sorry. Hi, Riley Hogan here.
Sure, we need your address, Mr. Hogan.
Yes, 5909 North Waterbury Road.
Okay, you've got up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Great. My comments and inputs to this project are related to the development of the property. I'm in commercial real estate and I do it for a living and have for 17 years. I engaged on these properties over five years ago when the Seaton Nursery became a vacant dead zone. You can find me on the path there, the bike path, more often than not, especially these days with the kids at home and my family. But again, I became engaged in these properties over five years ago, worked with multiple clients, developers, seeking to do something good, counter fruition here for the neighborhood and my family. Many of the concepts and interests early on fizzled out and a lot of the reason behind that isn't really known to the, you know, to the average person that may drive by it. But two years ago, or approximately two years ago, we had FEMA do a re-drawing of the floodplain. And that re-drawing definitely impacted the Seaton Nursery and what's happened there. What we found out during some of these uncovering periods with various developers and groups that essentially that has to be a parking lot due to the new FEMA floodplain line. And the existing structure actually had no use whatsoever that can go in there and reuse it. So no matter what happens here, that has to be demoed for any future use moving forward. Taylor's vision and investment into the Grand Avenue properties and willingness to work her business model within reason to accommodate and address the concerns is why we continue to work with her. Existing zoning allows for a restaurant bar service without any additional conditions that Taylor has agreed upon to appease the neighborhood. The Grand Avenue corridor in this area specifically had fears of neglect and investment like Taylor's is needed to help encourage other commercial property owners to make the investments that the neighborhood needs in this area. Neighborhood properties like the Car Wash, former Auto Zone, and the Seaton Nursery need more encouragement from city as well as neighborhood to make things happen like Taylor's doing here. I'd much rather see something happen here than to continue to have it to be a dead zone that's an eyesore in this area's corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so what we'll do here is we'll make one more call here. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant request? And if you're not speaking, please put yourself on mute there.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name is Teresa Binning and I live at 6001 Waterbury Circle. I've lived in this neighborhood for 20 years. The entire time I've lived here, there has been white issue with the Valer Ballroom, a facility never designed for concert events, including loud music on Sunday nights starting at midnight. In spite of this, neighbors, including myself, have continued to make improvements to their property and values have not declined. In this situation, the building is being designed for its purpose as a small event venue with appropriate noise-canceling materials and importantly, with consideration for the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Ms. Bowden has demonstrated her willingness to address and work with neighbor concerns, including limiting hours of operation, limiting the types of events they will host, a commitment to hire police officers for safety and security for appropriate-sized events. She's put together plans for overflow parking with an ongoing commitment to monitor its effectiveness. She's even adjusted placement of the building on the property to help appease the neighbor concerns. Ms. Bowden is from the neighborhood and fully appreciates the draw to this area. As such, I believe that not only her plans to create and attract this property becoming the neighborhood, but importantly, her diligent openness to satisfying neighbor concerns speaks to her long-term commitment to make this a beautiful addition to our neighborhood, not a detriment. I fully support it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? All right, we'll just do a going-wise, going-twice. Anybody else that wishes to speak in support? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and move to the next part of the public hearing on this agenda item. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition? Just put your hand up. I think maybe you're just in order of appearance. We've got Mr. Kirby. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, good afternoon and thank you. My name is Billy Kirby and I live at 6001 Walnut Hill Drive with my wife and two young daughters. We're just six homes away from the proposed site for this event center. I'd also like to point out that a good number of the people that we've heard in support for this project either work with Taylor or stand to gain financially, which is no surprise, and I respect their opinion. However, I will say that I don't feel that they consider the concerns of the neighbors and direct access. I completely disagree with the staff's recommendation that this proposal would adequately safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the person residing in the surrounding property. This specific business will be at peak hours of operation between 5:00 p.m. and midnight on weekends and until 10:00 p.m. on weekends. These business hours are not the same traditional hours as by existing businesses in the area. And in fact, these hours of operations take place at exactly the same time that we, as residents in the neighborhood, just like many of you, will return home to gather family, turn on your lamp, and tuck your children in for the night. No other business in our neighborhood invites 100 to 300 guests to converge on our block and host celebrations and parties until midnight or even 10:00 p.m. In fact, the only neighbor that we saw earlier in support of this, just a couple of weeks ago, had a small gathering in his backyard and I could hear it from the other side of my house at midnight. The noise and activity associated with guests departing at the end of the night is probably more of a concern for our neighborhood. Slamming car doors, holding conversations, the kinds of things, a mass exit are the kinds of things that disrupt sleep, even the quiet and the benefits we enjoy in our quiet neighborhood right now. On Walnut Hill Drive, which borders this block to the north, is a city bike route that's quite busy with cyclists and walkers late into the evening, especially during corporate months. And the intersections there at 60th and 61st in Walnut Hill are uncontrolled and present a safety issue for everyone during peak hours for the business of a wedding reception venue or event center. And I'm not sure there are many people here today that would like to live six doors or fewer from a venue like this. Several of our neighbors are concerned with our property values decreasing or a potential struggle to resell our homes. So to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the 24 homes adjacent to this property in this neighborhood, I ask for your board leadership to deny these conditional uses to discourage this particular type of business from being established in the middle of the neighborhood. And if not a denial, I ask that you do everything in your power to place the most stringent restrictions on the use of this property. Thanks three times. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Billy. You're most kind. We appreciate your comments. Okay, I think the next person on the list, Christine Henley. Go ahead. Let's see, did we have Christine in the queue here?
Okay, I'm here.
We got you now. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you to the commissioner, Christine Henley, at 75355th Street. You know, I have been watching this as a former council member since it was brought to my attention that this was going to occur. And I've really stayed in the background because I wanted the neighbors to take the lead on this. I was very disappointed with plan of zoning and the path that they approved it. And my whole purpose here today is, one, to hopefully get a good neighbor agreement. I think that the neighbors are resigned to the path that this is going to occur. However, they are also feeling like they've not had adequate representation from all avenues within the community. And let me just go through and talk about why I think it's important for a good neighborhood agreement. And give you an example of where it occurred previously. As I was a member of the city council, the Salisbury House is a venue that really hosts a number of weddings and activities. And I've seen in the press, heard Taylor mention several times that she relates to the Salisbury House and wants to be liked at Salisbury House. I can tell you that for a good six to nine months, a few years back, when the Salisbury House was doing a number of weddings and events, it was a nightmare for those individuals that were right next to the Salisbury House. Noise, parking, all kinds of issues, the same issues that have been discussed and have been raised by the neighborhoods here. We were successful finally in getting a good neighbor agreement between those neighbors, Salisbury Oak Neighborhood Association, and the Salisbury House to deal with those. So I am asking that the Board of Adjustment, if you approve this, that you make a stipulation that there be a good neighbor agreement. And I think that's really important now because if you look back at what transpired and I've watched these meetings and the discussions, Taylor came out of a P and D meeting and immediately told the neighborhood, the folks, the neighbors that she would sign a good neighbor agreement. Never happened. Never happened. And they've given her several examples of that. They tried to work with her and she has avoided it, even though she says that she's worked with the neighborhood. Now, granted, she's done something. I won't argue that. But there's still a lack of trust because she said one thing and she has not followed through and didn't willing to sign a good neighbor agreement with them. So I feel it's extremely important that there be some type of agreement that the Board of Adjustment would stipulate has to be met. The neighbors want to ensure that it's going to be successful for her, but they also want to ensure that their concerns have been addressed. Actions speak louder than words and Taylor's actions to this point have not stood behind what she said she was going to do. So I think in fairness to the neighborhood, that they really need to have that good neighbor agreement. The other thing, too, would be on some of the comments that have been made and the Neighborhood Association endorsement or not endorsement. You know, when the Waterbury Neighborhood Association originally took action on this, none of those individuals live in this area that we're talking about. They all live elsewhere within Waterbury. And I'm not a Waterbury Neighborhood Association member. But they did not reach out to the neighbors at all. So they sent a letter of support and then they took it back and they had all kinds of reasons about why it did or did not happen. And so the notification that went to Westwood, as I was looking through the documents today, went to a past president and I know that Westwood had a number of concerns regarding parking and congestion in the neighborhood. So it's unfortunate that the Neighborhood Association and some of the properties that are closely impacted by this have not responded because at the P and D meeting, there was a two-thirds majority required of the P and D board because of the amount of people that were in opposition. So to summarize, a good neighbor agreement, I think it's extremely important. I was disappointed in the staff's comment that that should be a private matter. They tried to get it done from the very beginning after Taylor said that she would do it. They've not been successful. So I would just ask that the Board of Adjustment take this under consideration if you're making your final decision. Thank you, Mel.
You bet. Thank you very much for your comments, Christine. Very good points to consider. Next up is Jenna Newell. Um, next up is Jenna Newell. And just unmute yourself, Jenna, and then, uh, just leave your address.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, good.
Thank you, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, yes, this is Gina Newell, we live at 535 Waterbury Circle and have been residents here for 30 years. Um, which in my mind tells you, we've made a tremendous investment in the community and in our neighborhood. We care what happens here about the quality of life as well as the property values going forward. Um, I would like to just reiterate what Christine said. Um, from the very beginning, um, we've been, we've been told this is a done deal, don't bother. Uh, but I would like to correct, uh, thinking about that, the number of cars were not shown. We had, we just forced the neighbor, are they committing to a super majority? Meaning there are a majority of people within the 250 and within 500 feet of this project that are in opposition to it. And yet, we've never had any representation regarding our desire that in spite of our excitement for an event center in Des Moines and certainly with this process, that we are convinced that we're quite capable of managing something like that. We just don't want it to happen. Um, I wonder, I was wondering if you all took a close look at the map to see where the homes are. They are right up against the proposed event center. And these, the people that own these homes have young families, children that are school age, uh, need to do their homework at night, need to get to bed early. And this is a seven-day, proposed seven-day event center, very late hours. Once the party's shut down, they're still cleaning up, disassembling, people are gonna be slamming doors, talking, lights gonna be on till late. It just changes the nature of the environment in the area where the people live within the area of the event. Um, and that's a big concern for us. The other concern is like Christine pointed out, we have not had the same experience with Taylor that others have experienced. Since the very second planning and zoning meeting, where Taylor came up with afterwards and said she was highly committed to sign a good neighbor agreement with you all as I want to be a good neighbor. We've gone back three or four times with an agreement of provisions, it's never. She's always said, no, I'm not gonna do it at this point in time, I don't have to. I'm gonna wait and see if I'm supporting to do it, basically what she told us. And that's just so heartbreaking for us because we would really like to work with her to get something, some kind of terms of agreement that we can call this. Uh, and this, I also would like you to know, part of the frustration we share is that as she was telling us she wants to do this good neighbor agreement, she was also changing everything. Every time we've gone to a meeting, we started with 250, yeah, now it's 300. Uh, parking's been up and down and I do hope you're thinking about the danger of people running across Grand Avenue once they park. Taylor told us that she was gonna have a shuttle service provided to bring people back and forth. And the last time we talked, she said, well, not anymore, that's, they're just gonna go on an absentee basis. Well, what's absentee, what does that mean? With these, the next four people park up and down the street on our grid at night, this weekend, and there's just no additional parking. They're either gonna ramble up into our neighborhood, but they're gonna park across the street and be running back and forth. We think that's really dangerous. Now, the other thing is, we were talking about music earlier, um, she wants to have a movie. Anybody thought about volume that's gonna be required for a movie night? Uh, and I'm not convinced that the strawberry will really keep, um, a band that might be playing inside, keep that volume at a reasonable level. Uh, yeah, so, yeah, it's just the patio, you know, there's still some stuff that starts about that music sweeping over up into the neighborhood. He did also say, like I said originally, it was just like the wedding venue, so it's easy. Now it's, it could be prom, it could be festivals, it could be this, that, the other. There's, there's gonna be bands in there, live bands in there. And we're just not convinced that, number one, I'm not even sure she can afford to do all the estimates she's talking about. It's nobody has been able to convince us of their mind. I know the question we asked at the city hall and the city council, I didn't really get answers. How did that exist to coming into our neighborhood, promising on that?
Ma'am, your, your five minutes are up, so if you've got 15, 20 seconds of anything you'd like to say in closing, I'll be kind and give that to you, if you'd like to wrap your comments up, please.
Sure, uh, I would just like to say that we would really appreciate having your support in a good neighbor agreement. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, our next speaker I believe would be, uh, David, is it Barajas? I don't wanna butcher that on you. Uh, but if you wanna unmute yourself, uh, you can have up to five minutes. We just need your complete name and address.
Yep, uh, David Baraja, 6101 Walnut Hill Drive. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, hear you fine.
Perfect, well, thank you, board, uh, thank you for the time. Uh, I, like I said, 6101 Walnut Hill Drive, I live about three houses north of the, uh, proposed White Willow Event Center. I guess a lot of my comments are, uh, echo what previous people have said in opposition and I share the same frustration. This is a personal matter to me because I do live right, right next door to this proposed property. I have two young children, uh, and, you know, as neighborhoods evolve and develop, they turn over. We moved in about five years ago and it was, uh, just starting to turn over from an older generation in a neighborhood or at least a part of the neighborhood to a lot of young families, which has been done after our kids. But, uh, it's gonna be a very difficult time with this proposed project going in. The noise is a significant concern to me. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to analyze this and say, this is a good idea. I totally don't think so, in first practice, so then I went to look, what has Des Moines done to you? Where I'm not so invested emotionally and financially, okay? So I looked at the rolling, similar scenario, buddy venue, uh, neighborhood surrounds it and the steps that they have taken, I think are pretty, pretty much exact without effort, but not. They have no amplified music outside. Their music is done by 10:00 PM on weeknights and 11:00 PM on weekends. And they also have minimal parking with, who are driving right there. We have that exact scenario with Grand Avenue being right there, limited parking. And their parking lot is across the street, such as this proposed project parking lot across the street. I think that's gonna be owned by Bill, or that's owned by Bill Ellison, he has arranged for that parking lot to be used. I think it would be absolutely reckless to not attempt upon a valet service or shuttle service at every single event like they do for the rolling, uh, that is in their contract, that's something they require because they know people are just gonna see their cars and, you know, have a few beers in them and wanna go right across the street. I think you are inviting, uh, a lot of risk, unnecessary risk by not mandating that a chalet or, or shuttle service be, be required for every event. Those are some objective concerns of mine, being a neighbor or a potential neighbor to this project. I also have, uh, concerns, I guess, about how the process has unfolded. We started this back on February 6th of this year. Uh, we received a postcard in the mail, a few weeks prior to that notifying us about applying and zoning. That's the first time we ever heard about this project going forward. I know I'm supposed to contact the, um, Neighborhood Association, but that never filtered down to the neighbor. But that's the first time we heard about it. At the end of the meeting, we had a, a little powwow with Taylor. She came up, she said, sorry, we didn't get time to talk, I would love to enter a good neighborhood agreement. Uh, please send a note, so, want to call a C note from the Bradshaw office, that's over the next day on February 7th. We didn't hear back for about eight weeks, I would like to say. She first said she didn't get it and she said it got, it sent to her spam, we sent it again. Uh, we've had a, a joint meeting with Josh Membelbaum, the city council, for about two hours going through the good neighborhood agreement. She gave us verbal commitments to many of the things, and the other things she said she was gonna discuss with her attorney. Lo and behold, right before our last city council meeting, she said essentially, thanks for no thanks, uh, I don't have to do this, I'm not going to do this, I'm respectful. And then, so we had another, uh, neighborhood agreement, or neighborhood meeting, uh, about a week ago or maybe two weeks ago now. And she essentially said, you know, if I'm a bad neighbor, then I'll sign a good neighborhood agreement, which I think is putting a lot of trust in someone who's saying, once I act bad, then, uh, then I'm gonna volunteer to be held by stricter rules that are prohibiting my bad conduct. Completely illogical, uh, it doesn't give the neighbors a whole lot of safeguard, a lot of trust, what she's doing. So I know there's a lot of people who's great moral characters, but a lot of them have financial issues, as Billy said. We talked to Michael Laval, he's a caterer, he's gonna be in for using that venue. Talked to Bill Ellison, who talked about this lightest property, which Bill Ellison actually owns that property that he's selling to White Willow. So if it's so lighted and pushing ice door, he could have fixed it himself. Then go on and on to real estate, architect, uh, potential caterer, of course they're gonna be supporting the project. The neighbors, by vast majority, are not. At the city council, we had about 90 constituents on a petition opposing this. And I would, I would present Mr. Bundy, I think he has those in his records. I would highly encourage the board to consider all the neighbors that have been impacted, uh, the traffic, the noise, everything. I heard the time to go off, so thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, David, we appreciate your comments. All right, our next person would be Ramona Wright. So Ramona, you can unmute yourself, uh, we just need your address and you've got five minutes.
All right, my name is Ramona Wright, I'm at 435 60th Street. And, uh, this two houses north of the proposed site. Um, I, my, my name is, you know, this is, you know, the parking, parking and traffic flow, um, regarding this location. Uh, there is, it seems like, like for people to have, why not, you really have to worry about traffic and parking? Uh, but with this, you know, that's a bit, a bit, since we have more people in the area, more data. And, uh, I was looking at the proposed plan, uh, and as far as the park, um, it, it looks like there's been a green space, uh, kind of developed on the corner of First and Grand. Um, so I think, looking at the full of traffic, the people that go to the parking lot, I, I feel it was more, um, I get the feeling that the people would be more geared towards exiting on the 60th. Uh, are they allowed to have an exit? There's an exit, but there's just kind of minimal parking next to that green space. Is, is it an issue for parking? There was a conversation, uh, question where I, uh, there's a conversation thinking that it would have to be approved to have, allowed for the, uh, access point out on the green, is that, is it a part of? Is the traffic supposed to be urgent, for the neighborhoods or wait for the neighbors? That is all.
This is for you to give your, your testimony, we're not taking questions, I don't believe here.
Okay.
We can have the appellant address that during their rebuttal if they so choose to, but just go ahead and state your concern.
Okay, I apologize. So, um, but I, I guess the amount of people and the number of days, uh, is what concerns me. Uh, there is gonna be, is gonna make it a very, very busy area, um, yeah, living just, you know, stores. Uh, I feel like I'm in real slow activity, uh, and I will be affected by that.
Okay, all right, anything else you wanna ask, Ramona, you have a little time left, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right, well, we appreciate your patience and waiting today, uh, appreciate your testimony, thank you. Okay, next up would be then Anthony Carroll, go ahead.
Uh, can you hear me? How's my volume?
Sure.
Can you, uh, can you please, I, I offered exhibit, can you please put the picture I submitted here for someone, I gotta respond if you put that on, could you, thank you. All right, so, hey, well, I am Anthony Carroll and as you can see from this picture, I live at 525 60th Street here in Des Moines, and this is a photo I took yesterday from my property line, my view from four houses down of where the venue will go. And that's really the backdrop and I want you to look at that versus my ugly mug while I speak. So I thank you for your time and I wanna say, um, I'll just simply say, I oppose this and it really goes back to, and along with my family, my wife is also working, as many people work, thankfully, my wife is gainfully employed, but doing so with a five-year-old and a three-year-old daughter, so we are lucky. Um, I, and it really comes down to, we oppose this and ask you to oppose it because of the job, the specific narrow jobs you have to avoid and mitigate policies both detrimental to the surrounding property. I am one of those. You know, I listened to your, Mr. Chair, your earlier discussion about not meeting in person, don't know when that will be, what the new normal will be. Uh, I think another, uh, board member talked about, don't know if we'll be returning to the new, uh, when we return, but what will be the new norm. Those are all great questions, really important questions. And that really speaks to you because it's the time of day of what is possible. And I, so I have to start with the underlying thing that they're looking at. A wedding venue, uh, what one of the supporters described it, but then I also heard some chuckles from you talking about, as I think all of us did, the myriad of other things this has become and it will be even by their own documents. And that, the absurdity, and yes, it is absurdity even prior to the, the neighborhood, but the idea of doing a pack, um, would start about 250 and now it's gone up to 300, but we're packaging it as we could do 1,000, but I guess somehow they're mitigating concern from going to 1,000 to 300, which is more than what they promised in, in February, um, but I guess we're up to 300. And it, I'll just focus on that, because it's really, I will say to you, I've been attending every meeting, never been personal. I'll say now and I'll end this by saying, I, 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 what I know about the applicant, it seems like an ethical, great determined business order, there's no doubt. But the absurdity of this business in itself, just please, ask you to take this vote today. Try to talk to any friends in vacuum about what this is doing and where it's going. And, and the current time, and that this is moving forward so quickly, so, uh, that's why I oppose. Because of the myriad of things it's done. And, uh, what I'll say is, we try to work in good faith, as a good faith neighbor agreement, that has been gone backwards. Um, and, uh, one of the many things that's been stated, but then changed is, we're not planning on doing this. And then it changes to, that's what you're doing. And new surprises that are not restrictions to try to mitigate concern, which I believe that's what your goal is and I know it's just frustrating, uh, on those people who feel like we've not been listening to this process, that really should try to mitigate and listen to the concern. That's still my goal. I oppose this because I already struggle to put my three-year-old down at night, I'm not eating to that. I don't want more drunk people in my lawn. And, uh, again, I'm gonna live here, I'm gonna stay here. So if you cannot oppose this, if, for whatever reason, if in a vacuum, this is the business model that is super urgent to move forward right in the neighborhood, simply do these simple things that are consistent to what my fellow neighbors who live in the area have already said. And keep in mind, it literally is all the residential neighbors who live around this have opposed, including the one who now supports this, actual residents without business ties, originally signed our petition against, that's an important point. But I'll just say, um, as one of the staffers I'm not gonna get to, everyone has their jobs to, that Ellis, to me. Staffer Eric based a government statement, or let's, let's just say emissions, I won't get into. But I feel like perhaps this analysis that you, I think Mr. Chair even correctly due to the inference of the many cases made for this, he said, uh, let's, we get into a little bit of the noise issue. So I'd like to ask you to do what was one of the business, one of the meetings held by the applicant that, uh, and do what they said they would like to, keep the noise inside, that's what they wanted to do. So please do that by saying, opposing me with the outside the venue, including newly imbedged bail paddies. That's a simple thing you could do. Oppose fans for live performances, I would take it for, not just for profit, which is currently construction, but the big loophole of what would be allowed for fans' live performances for nonprofits. And again, that's in the venue, keep the noise inside. Oppose alcohol sales and possession of alcohol outside the venue. Those are steps that, unless I'm missing something, you could take down today. So again, not planning on- So again, not planning on changes often, and that is the issue. And I get it, look it, I don't, I'm not a math teacher, my brother is. I get the math, it's hard on them. And why are we doing this? I just quickly want to wrap up by saying, going back to why we're doing this. I will do. Um, the I Thor, the I Thor is a parking lot. That's the one thing you're changing. And as I pointed out, it's being, it's being changed from, I guess, the I Thor to another flood issue with this parking, you could do, an actual park there, I know that's not going to happen. The idea of worse things can go there. You know, we live in a fear of the unknown. I fear the known, and I'll just simply say this, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, I, 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 I got a call last Saturday, practice Wednesday, asking someone, uh, calling to ask me if I'm going to sell my home. I said, what I said to that person, support for you all, I am not going anywhere. So if you can't listen to me, please do it and help the applicant today. Thank you so much for your time considering.
You bet. You are very welcome. We appreciate your concerns. I try to be as gracious as I can, so we, on time management, so we appreciate everybody trying their best. Um, I know this is important, um, as homeowners, as residents, as families. Um, okay. Next up for bid, Antonio, I think you've been waiting. You have the floor.
Yes, uh, you did.
Yeah. Okay. There it goes. So Antonio, you've got to hit, is it star nine, or does he just have to unhit his mute button?
Yeah, I think this is Eric, uh, this is Eric Clundy. I think he has to unmute his mute function on his phone.
Right, just, just his own phone service. Antonio, if you can hear us, you should have a mute button on your phone. It'd just be a little symbol, either by your speakerphone. Staff, do you have an ability to talk with him directly?
Um.
Or not?
Unless we have his phone, let me look and, I mean, I would have to look and see if we got an email that he.
I, I wonder if it's possible he stepped away momentarily, so if he's not hearing us.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna unlower his hand if he's trying to get, uh, his communication set up, then he should raise hand again.
And remind me to come back to him, or we'll, we'll, we'll make a final request here. All right, so for temporarily, is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition? Okay, it looks like his hand is up again. Antonio, for some reason, if you're following either on your computer or, or some, somehow you have yourself muted. And Eric, can you tell if he, is he connecting through his phone, or is he connecting through the Zoom app?
Well, I don't know if he's using the Zoom app on his phone, but it's through his phone.
All right.
And it does, it, whatever it is, it doesn't have the video taken still.
Right. So Antonio, I'm going to try to help you here, I'm not a tech wizard, but if, if you're using your phone with the Zoom app, within the app itself, you, you have to click on your own identity there in Zoom, and there, there's a way to either show your video, which we don't want you to do, but there's a way to unmute your microphone, and it's probably through the Zoom app. So you've got to look at your phone there, and hopefully your Zoom app is up and you can see your own identity there. You've got to, I think, click on that and look at some of the options. Uh, we want to give you a chance to speak, but we also want to keep the hearing moving here as much as possible. Like we're still having issues there.
Yeah, and he may want to send some written comments to planning@dmoc.org, either we could, uh, have written for the record, or write for the record if he wants to have, if he has anything written.
Well, if we're to consider that, he'll have to, if he wants this board to consider it, he'll have to send it in like el pronto here, next few minutes.
Just trying to come up with some other options, uh, for getting that message to the board.
Yeah. Um, is there a public number that he could call at this moment, if he's listening, to talk to one of you? And therein, is, is there a way that we can patch him in like that? In, in other words, could you put him on a speakerphone?
Yes, I could do that if he wants to call, uh, five one five two one zero five five two three.
Okay. So Antonio, if it's okay here, I think to try to get this done, I'd like you to write this number down, call five one five two one zero five five two three, and then we'll find a way to kind of patch you through. Is that correct, Eric?
Okay. I'm going to put you on speaker and then we're going to be on.
Yeah. Um, do we want to go ahead and go to Katie for the moment then?
We don't have the control on the beat, so I'm going to put you on speaker for this call, okay?
Oh, okay. Is he available there?
Yeah.
Okay, go, go ahead.
I'm sorry for the trouble. Yeah, I've been connected to you before. I don't want to, I, I've, I've, uh, 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 the, uh, Warner Hill Drive, they're on, like, yeah, without, appreciating everything that's out there at the party. Be quiet, too. I wanted to point out that Eric, the, the chart that you put out there that shows, uh, uh, very few people filing charts from this, I don't think that's correct. There's all kinds of neighbors that have, uh, are opposition to this, and maybe they thought because they filed their charts and opposition to the prior hearing, didn't do it again, but in any event, you know, so please don't take that chart as gospel. The, the other thing I wanted to discuss was the, the recommendations of the staff, so it's just parking it all. And we're going to have a, a facility that will hold three hundred people with somewhere around six parking spaces. So you know what's going to happen, the spare people, they're not going to all park full together, so they're going to come out there and stare, there's going to be dozens more cars that have to park, and they're going to park in the new. And, and I'm looking at the information that you sent around, criteria for the board to consider. One of them is, uh, proposed use will not have duly suggested in the street. Don't think that's going to happen here, that the proposed use will not diminish or impair public property. We've already heard, I'm sure, talk about that. Uh, the proposed use shall have those, the, against that settled impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties. We've heard all kinds of things, uh, that is happening. Uh, in any event, I, if we're doing, you know, many conditions that have been told in the zoning, the zoning process are good to this point, but there's nothing about parking. I think law requires applicants to sign a good neighbor agreement and leave that addresses over slow parking and what it's going to do to provide added support for the site. And, you know, with that, um, this is a problem, I, I will just get it, um, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Appreciate that. Uh, yeah, that's awesome. Okay, Eric, thanks for, uh, speaking with that. Um, what we'll do here, let's see, it looks like Katie Gerlock would like to speak next. Go ahead, Katie.
Hi, yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly.
Hey, yeah, safe. So this is going to echo just a little bit, um, what the previous person just said, but I am Katie Gerlock, five thirty-nine Waterbury, her gold parent of two young children. See, I just wanted to kind of urge us all to remember that the neighborhood around this site, um, really has a high density of young children and cyclists accessing that bike path. Um, I don't see how they're anywhere near enough parking stalls on the project to really safely accommodate those guests of three hundred. Um, and I know it's not clear, there's the possibility, and this isn't the forum to get into, but the formula in use to determine the parking feels, um, feels really out of touch to me. Um, you know, and I, on one hand, I understand the appeal, the opportunity to, after several years, finally develop this land in a fun place, um, and I know that that makes it tough for a lot of us to say no, but I, I guess I would call on us to really look at that as this plan as it is without required shuttle or an increase in guest capacity. Uh, I foresee guests unfamiliar with this neighborhood are riding into the venue to discover there are no stalls, and after their pass through the lot, we now have drivers who are frustrated, late, and probably lost, flying around the neighborhood trying to find free parking. And that's just when they get there, um, you know, and of course, when they go to leave, we need to remember that cyclists are moving through these neighborhoods after dark all the time. And now we have people drink, you know, who've been drinking, attempting to navigate back through neighborhoods to leave. Um, I just think we need to really remember that, that the cyclists are, there is fairly significant numbers after dark on weekends. Um, so I guess, from an economic and land development perspective, I guess that it's hard to say, but this project is not safe because of inadequate parking.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, Katie?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, uh, your patience here and waiting in the queue.
You bet.
Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition today? Do this, it's going once, going twice. Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition? I'm trying to look here, and our moderators are helping as well. I don't think I see anybody else. So anybody else in opposition? Hit the raise hand your button or star nine on your phone. All right, going once, going twice. Okay. Now, um, in this step, um, just to be considerate, there, there may be people who weren't in opposition or, or weren't in support, but is there anybody that has any comments relating to the project, uh, that just has a neutral position? If so, please hit the raise hand button or star nine on your phone. Going once, going twice, don't see any. Okay, so board members. Um, all right, it, it looks like zoning enforcement officer, opportunity to make a statement if needed. Does the zoning enforcement officer feel the need to make a statement? Okay, apparently not. Okay, all right. And that's not a normal requirement, so questions for staff? We'll start with board member Justin Gross. And we got to unmute him there quick, or let him unmute himself.
Hey, Bert? Bert? No?
I can hear, I got you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, Eric, uh, are you familiar with the good neighbor agreement between Salisbury Neighborhood and Salisbury House?
I'm not directly familiar with it. Um, I don't believe it was integrated into anything that the board, uh, had directly with the, uh, the special permit that was involved with Salisbury House in the past. So I'm not sure what the capacity of the city brokering that, uh, agreement, um, what their, what their commitment is in that agreement, so I couldn't speak to that.
Okay. Have you, I mean, because it sounded like there, there is an agreement in that it may have helped solve some issues in the past. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, and I think that that could, that could well be the case, and, and there's definitely neighbor agreements that exist. Uh, I'm not sure to what level the city is a party on that particular situation. Um, you know, certainly city leadership may have helped broker that in some fashion. Um, to my knowledge, it was not part of the decision of the board or a zoning decision. Um, so, you know, the fact that that's effective, nothing in the staff recommendation is, is being contrary to having a good neighbor agreement. Uh, we just did not think that we should take one wholesale as a condition of the, of the, uh, conditional use.
Thank you, Eric.
Um, let's see. Any other questions for city staff?
This is Lynn, I've got some questions.
Sure, go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, on the good neighbor agreement, who enforces that?
Here are members of the board, this is Sue Ann Donovan, I can speak a little bit to good neighbor agreements.
Please do.
Good neighbor agreements are traditionally entered into with businesses by the Des Moines Police Department after a place has proven to be, um, unruly or hard to manage and causes problems for the neighborhood. Specifically, I know of one on Sixth Avenue where there was a convenience store that was causing all sorts of trouble for the neighborhood, and they entered a good neighbor agreement in order to retain their liquor license. I know of several others that are similar in nature. They are traditionally entered into with the business by the police department as a part of a negotiation on criminal activity.
Thank you, Sue Ann.
Yeah?
I have, I have one other question is, what is the maximum number of spaces at the hundred and twenty percent mark? Because I agree, I think that, you know, the spaces required is way too low. I mean, first point, I would like to be a hundred and fifty, you don't get to be able to car, but what's the maximum number of spaces we can have at the hundred and twenty percent level?
The standard will be one per six feet, which is based on an occupancy of three hundred at this point, because that's the limitation. Um, and then there would be one per four hundred square feet of office, so that could be a little variable depending on what they land on with their office. Um, at this time, what they're proposing, so it's to be calculated at fifty-two spaces, they could go to a hundred and twenty percent under the provisions for the commercial, um, dotted, uh, under the MX one zoning for those used in MX one. At that point, then they would need, uh, design alternative relief, uh, through our chapter one thirty-five.
And is that another, uh, application to us or to?
Some of that could be considered, uh, administratively, depending on how they create a sharing arrangement, uh, as potential use, uh, way to man, manage that, so, but it is through the chapter one thirty-five process. Anything that ends up having to be appealed to a public hearing would go to the plan of zoning.
I think I understand. Thank you.
Any, okay. David? You'll need to unmute yourself.
David said that based on our design, they're going to have, that's a hundred and twenty.
That would be the hundred and twenty percent of their minimum requirement.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to give Lynn a little clarification there based on what this, that's so far, that's what I, that's the number I have.
Thank you, Dan.
Agree that there's in at the park. No, I'm, I'm, I'm on my, I'm, 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 I'm.
Yeah, as, a, a, as is listed, what we're doing now, we're asking the staff any questions we have. We'll then listen to anything Taylor would like to say in closing, and then the board will discuss this between ourselves publicly here, and then we'll make our decision.
Okay, yeah, they just go with that schedule, okay. All right.
Yeah, no, that's awesome.
I'll, I'll reach back in a little bit, thanks.
Yes, okay. Um, any other questions from the board members for staff? Eric, I've just got one, real quick one. With the rezoning that was approved here for the McJuice District, um, this does allow for assembly and entertainment small uses, so long as there's a conditional use permit review by Board of Adjustment.
Correct.
Right. So that's a lot different than, well, it's been rezoned to this MX one, and now we want to put a, uh, concrete crushing plant here. They wouldn't be able to get a conditional use permit for that, so, um, just kind of as a point here, the use they're requesting is commensurate with the district it's zoned for, as long as there's a conditional use permit, which would give some additional oversight to the operation. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. They rezoned, uh, the zoning that they had previously, uh, would have allowed... That is correct, yeah. They rezoned, uh, the zoning that they had previously, uh, would have allowed the venue as a conditional use, um, but would not have allowed any type of business selling liquor wine or beer, uh, with the license.
Right, okay.
So they, they generally went for the zoning to be able to have that ability to request.
Yeah, all right. And, and again, this is just a question, not making a, a, a statement about any support or, or non-support for the project here, just a question for you. Okay, thank you. Um, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, one of the questions that seemed to be out there was the comments that were made through the rezoning. Those did not carry. So the, the conclusion on that, those, those, uh, written comments received from the rezoning process
Right.
were not carried into this request.
Exactly, but conversely, that's a good point, but conversely, those that were within the radius for this request would have been notified, and it should have been clear what now this process is and that there's an opportunity to comment. Is that correct?
Yes, they were notified and given, uh, the additional opportunity to comment for this.
Right, okay, all right. Okay, so if we, um, don't have any further questions from the board or staff, as I talk slowly here in case there are, um, what we'll do now?
Well, this is Lynn.
Uh-huh, Lynn, go ahead.
One more question for staff for, um, I don't know if this would be Sue Ann or if this would be, um, Judy for legal. If, if we're to put in a requirement that after three months, they meet the neighborhood, it needs to be a good neighborhood agreement, will you write that as a condition if there's a meeting after the opening three months to review what needs to be done?
Okay, members of the board, again, good neighbor agreements are done by the police department traditionally, not by community development.
So we can't even suggest that they do that?
I don't know how, I don't know how the police department would intercede in that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, so if there's any other questions for staff and the board? Okay, seeing none, so the way the hearing now works, Taylor, you have three minutes for your closing comments, rebuttal if there's anything you'd like to share, um, in response to some of the concerns that were presented by the neighbors. If there's any clarification you want to give on what your operations will be, or any changes you'd want to make to what you proposed, uh, you got about three minutes to wrap it up, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, just to start, this is, you know, a decent sized project, and it's one of the bigger ones I've done, so, um, I've been trying to do my best, uh, my best possible way just to remedy things with, with the neighbors. Um, but I do feel like some of my words coming from the neighbors are being distorted and misinformation. Um, in particular, the good neighbor agreement, I did not see this agreement until after the CNC meeting, um, and then shortly after COVID hit. Um, you know, I had multiple calls and meetings, council member Josh Mandelbaum, and he would say that they were gonna get him the good neighbor agreement, the biased person, um, over to him for both of us to kind of go through. Um, we didn't see that until, I think, the Wednesday before the first city council meeting. And it had thirty-three points listed on it, opposed to the original copy had right around, I think, was it eleven to fifteen? Um, and going through the document with the good neighbor agreement, that's where we decided to do the three conditions that could allow the points the neighbors had on that good neighbor agreement. Um, and again, a lot of those points that I mentioned earlier, you know, past fee, the hours, um, and the types of events, you know, that's limiting for, you know, a new business, business starting out, but again, I put it in close neighbors to make sure that, um, I was doing everything possible to, you know, be a good neighbor. Um, with that being said, I'm not saying I will not sign a good neighborhood agreement, you know, once we're in business and it started, if we need to. Um, again, I just feel like it's a rare thing to do before something, even though before I've even had the chance to prove that I'm going to do the things that I've mentioned whole time that I intend to do. Um, so that's kind of what I wanted to touch base on, good neighbor agreements in regards to parking. I do onwards of two hundred events, my company does, um, a year, so we deal with parking all the time at various different venues. Rollin's Mansion, yes, it's a shuttle from tech parking. Um, I already reached out to them, I have a letter, um, back when we were doing zoning, regarding that. Um, talking about different shuttle options that would be available. Um, again, in the good neighbor agreement intention, I would need a shuttle to a single event. Um, and the reason why we can't commit that is because for bridal tower, if there were people, I wouldn't necessarily need a shuttle to party back and forth. Uh, but you know, when we do have events onwards of, you know, you, that's, that's three hundred, a hundred percent, if we need to have a shuttle, we will. Uh, biggest thing I don't want to happen is for people to think that our venue's parked, parked at. Um, so this is one of the number one questions I get when I, uh, do venue tours at different spaces where we're gonna park, especially, you know, downtown and Rollin's Mansion and other places. Uh, so it's definitely one of my number one priorities to make sure that guests know where the, um, the lease spots are, know that there's a shuttle, party people back and forth. Um, letting them know what sandwich boards on the corners that, um, we do not want guests to park on the streets. Um, just, and again, creating that on wedding websites or event websites, um, again, about the parking. Um, a couple of other, you know, notes I had, um, I just wanted a little bit of clarification on, I think, regarding to, uh, the end time of, uh, liquor sales. So I just had a question on that point, I don't know if you can pull it up. Sorry, I don't know if I can. Um, my question is on that item, uh, I just want a little bit of clarification of that. Again, we, uh, fully intend to wrap up sound right around the, be eleven o'clock, which is why the limitation is on there for, you know, alcohol sales, um, one hour prior of alcohol sales to, um, one hour before. This is one thing that comes to mind, it's like New Year's Eve, uh, and going until midnight, so just wanted a little bit of clarification on, on that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Taylor?
Um, I guess to end, I mean, I'm really excited about the project, um, I really want to get the the better against the project on my side, and again, I would love to see something local in that space opposed to a chain or a large restaurant or, you know, a bar that's open, um, you know, multiple, I mean, every seven days a week, eight to, um, you know, eleven each midnight. Uh, and again,
Right.
parks will be open every single day. Uh, they're mainly on the weekend, um, during the season, wedding and wedding season.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so at this stage of the game now, we close all the public comments, um, and we'll go to board deliberations, which means the seven of us now as board members, we will have a discussion here together. Um, we're done asking questions of staff or the applicant. It's now time for us to review this with each other and see if we do have concerns and, or if we have support or a combination therein for what motion the board might want to make, and then we'll vote on whatever that motion may be. Subject how that motion turns out, that may yay or nay the project, um, or could lead to some, some other conditions. So what we'll do here now, um, any of my colleagues here to kick us off, do you have any initial thoughts on this?
This is Lynn, I first have that.
Lynn, okay. All right, ladies first, Lynn.
Anybody who knows me, um, yeah, I, I think this is a great idea. Taylor has put a lot into it, and a lot of people speaking positively, and to address the neighbor's concern, yes, a lot of people that take money from her without her saying positive things, the positive thing is they're making money. Um, but I just see that as a very positive thing, seems like a very well-minded business person. I would like to see a caveat in the thing, or we write that she maxes out the, the parking spaces available, and Eric says that's kind of listed as, like, work with the office and everything. So I don't want to put the number of like sixty-two, but the case is right now she's allowed fifty-two at minimum. I would like to see the parking spaces maxed out at the maximum. And, um, for the neighbors that are listening in, we have nothing to say about the good neighbor agreement from what I understand. And I would like to maybe see or just suggest to you, uh, not across the board, but for Taylor and the neighborhood, be together, maybe, uh, this has been, uh, business for three months, and see if you have any concerns. Uh, it sounds like she knows what the concerns are, and, um, no one wants to be the neighbor, the business that everybody looks down on, because I'm sure she's expected to be the neighbor. I'm all for the agreement. The only change I would make is to see a number of parking spaces. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, anybody else? Dave, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, go, gotcha, go ahead.
Hey, Eric, can you put that aerial map back up? Right, and those are the neighborhoods? And all the, like, parts of that?
You're saying the consent map?
Yeah, yeah.
Does everybody see in that now?
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, that looks, I mean, it, this has been empty for a long time, at least, just over days, and that's people. That was something, sure. People, people back, right up to the neighborhood, and it's, it's very interactive neighborhood. Taylor talked a little bit about security parking, which would be across brands to the south, major thoroughfare, four lanes, and cars really get moving down. Uh, hopefully, I believe that's the RX one. Those on that, that parking, you're there to let it settle. And count on street parking, both east and west, of, of, of facilities as parking places. I don't think we got access to parking at all, and, and this has been brought up multiple times, and that's why I asked my question at the very beginning, because we're gonna have three hundred guests, so, um, there's a free bar. We're, we're gonna be up north of a hundred parking lots. I don't know if you put a hundred parking lots on this. Maybe patio, some other, like, thing. Like, the thing is, the parking is created, don't want a lot of parking, so we're putting a free. We're looking at a facility in here that's gonna demand a lot of parking. Now parking, what it's gonna do is it's gonna go around the neighborhood. Get out of the neighborhood, you either go to the west, or, or more south, or you go east, if it's, if it's. Yeah, you're going, you're going only there. Uh, and there's ways to get through the neighborhood, I happen to live, I'm not too far, and it's allocated to eat, it's always a little dark, uh, to find your way around it there, so. You know, I think it's great that we got an option to go in here. I'm not sure this is the best use or the, or the, or the right project for this big block property. They and these, these neighbors have, have been very outspoken. I get the good neighborhood agreement with the fleet. I think that, you know, the horse is already out of the barn, the cat's already out of the bag, and you put one of those, uh, because there's been an issue, and that's what's driving, you know, putting together on the front end. So, and I, I, I listen to the neighbors, there's a lot of things here that can turn them, but I think we need to convince the board for extremely that's all, and I'm fairly aware of that, so, you know, for me, I, I think we've got some work to do on this thing still, and I think she's got some work to do with that neighborhood. Lynn, you know, for us, thinking that in three months, that's a good backup, I think unless she's in violation of anything, she can just kind of do her thing. And whether she's on the good side of the neighbors or not, might be. I, I don't think she wants to be on the bad side, but she can have a business, right? If she hosts a hundred events a year, particularly, you know, and we're just gonna do it every Friday and Saturday, that's only a hundred and four. So I don't even know, and, and another person spoke who is going to potentially have access to this, but I think she's gonna make this available to other event planners. So it, it could become an extremely popular place, it could really create a lot of disruption within the neighborhood as we serve, so. Those are some of my thoughts, I mean, sit here with some other folks, have a sit. So, go ahead.
Thank you, David. Justin, how about you?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think the effects of other event sites and neighborhoods like Salisbury and like Rollin's Mansion should help guide us in making our decisions today. Um, I would like to hear from legal ass to a neighborhood agreement. I mean, I'm not totally, I don't think that's out of question here. I mean, but if, if we can't require a neighborhood agreement, then I, I'd say we require a plan for, especially for overflow of parking. So I would be in favor of adding some sort of addition that requires valet or shuttle for every event that sees a number of parking spots. So that, that's sort of my initial thoughts. I, I would also like to hear from other members as well.
This is, um, your legal counsel, Judy Parks Cruz. If you want to have the rest of the board members who wish to, um, speak, go ahead. I'll let them first, um, give their comments, and then I can circle back to that particular question you had, if that's all right with you folks?
I, I tell you what, Judy, while I expressed with, with Justin's comment and question, I'm happy if you want to go ahead and address it, in, in the, with our comments.
Very good. Thank you, um, Chair and board members. Um, in the, using the term, um, good neighbor agreement, um, it probably has different meanings. I don't know that it has a fixed legal meaning. Um, what it has been used as in the city of Des Moines is as, um, our zoning enforcement, um, officer has indicated. It has been a specific, um, agreement that has arisen after there has been a series of issues at a particular location, and it has been, um, brokered, I guess for lack of a better word, um, through the police department and the enforcement concerns they are seeing. Um, I am not familiar with what the terms are of the Salisbury one or other locations. Um, I think what the thought is here from the neighbors, um, who are using it is something that is prospective rather than reactive. And my big concern is if it is being added in, who the parties are going to be, including the city being a party to that, because then there is an enforcement expectation on the city. And we are already crafting that through the conditional use permits, because when an issue arises as conditional use permit, then it can come back to this body, as you have a lot of experience with in other kinds of conditional use permit experiences. So that would be the biggest concern I would have with trying to add something like that here is specifically, what does it mean, who are the parties, and then who is going to be expected to enforce that? And I would, um, be very concerned that that is a task being, um, imposed upon the city under contract terms rather than a, um, a deliberative process as is included in the code.
Yeah, very good point, Judy. Very much appreciated, and I will want to come back to that myself here later. Um, other fellow board members, other general thoughts? Okay, all right, what I, of course, that's a board chair, not, not just to, uh, help facilitate the meeting, but once in a while the chair likes to comment too, and I've taken a lot of notes here. Um, first and foremost, everybody that has spoke on this item, whether you're in favor or not, I appreciate your comments. This board listens closely. I've served with these members for a number of years for most of them. Um, when, when we see these cases, we're much like a jury. Uh, we don't take into account previous meetings, conversations, the press. We are here to listen today. We are here to apply, uh, the zoning ordinance regulations within the duties we have. So we take everybody's comments into account and evaluate them. Um, in the end, some of our discussions and some of our decisions may or may not agree with your comments. Um, in the end, some of our discussions and some of our decisions may or may not agree with your comments. And I can't address everybody's comments here, but I do wanna keep a couple things in mind with this. Um, it sounds like there is some concern about parking, but according to the city, they will meet the city's parking requirement. But the city's parking requirements have changed over time, and it is what it is. Now, from a legal perspective, anybody can park on a city street in a legal parking zone as long as the car's moved once every 24 hours. So we can't necessarily say, well, then you folk can't park on the street because that's in front of a house or that's in a residential area. Where we can have problems is if those people who are parking in front of that house are loitering or causing problems or leaving things behind in the street, then that becomes an issue. Um, I do have a concern, I've served on this board for a few years, let's put it that way. Um, what I don't like to do is create a special file folder for city staff that has three or four different agreements in there where we have to look at agreements for shuttles or we have to look at good neighbor agreements. I'll come to that, that, back in a minute. What we need to do is go back to what the basics are here. The reason the zoning ordinance is set up the way it is is so we, as the Board of Adjustment, can evaluate this because a conditional use permit would be required. If we would be inclined to improve that, that conditional use permit, in my opinion, is the good neighbor agreement. Because that conditional use permit lays out the terms of how you'll operate. And if you violate those terms, Glenn at a minimum, our, our zoning enforcement officer can go out there and say, hey, you're not complying with this. Um, therefore, you get in line. Glenn even has the ability to bring that back to us at the Board of Adjustment for potential revocation of that conditional use permit. So if this board would be inclined to approve this today with a conditional use permit, so here Taylor will go, and I'm assuming she'll spend seven figures multiple times over to build this thing. The sword of Damocles does not hang over the neighborhood, it hangs over her. If she makes this investment to build, build this and doesn't manage it well enough within the terms of this conditional use permit, which requires that the character of the neighborhood be preserved, then she could get this taken away. Makes you have all this investment and no business. That's not my personal concern for her, that's my warning to her. If we grant this, she's gonna have to make sure she does this right. If she's got too many seats, if she's got, let's say, 300 seats and parking is a nightmare, she couldn't have to figure this out on how to reduce the number of seats. She'll have to be careful on how she does run her event. Because you're gonna all be watching this as hopefully good neighbors who are like, well, if she does this, okay, great. But if she doesn't, you're gonna be the first ones to let the city know. I wanna remind folks of a few other things too here. On more than two sides, the two major streets of this, this borders other commercial businesses. This isn't just a residential area. The largest corridor on the west, southwest side of the city is Grand Avenue. It's a four lane street. There's plenty of activity on that street, plenty of traffic to a degree, probably plenty of noise. Um, so I, I don't think it's out of the question to have a use here where there may be people coming and going during the day or into certainly, certain parts of the evening. This venue would be closed, I would gather, before the restaurant might to the west. So I think it's important for us to certainly put it in perspective. The perspective needs to be, if this board chooses to approve this, this conditional use permit should have enough conditions to, um, preserve the integrity of that area. And if it does not, it can come back to us. So I hope that the neighbors can see, if this is approved, there is an insurance policy here, if you will, that if it gets out of control, it's gonna be dealt with. And when, if it's dealt with where we remove the permit, the last thing that Taylor wants to see happen to her property. Um, so those are some of my thoughts here to share with my fellow board members. So at this stage of the game, if anybody's got anything else they wanna share, great. If not, if somebody wants to make a motion, uh, would you have a staff recommendation for a motion? We could look at amending that, we could look at other motions, we could look at a motion to not grant the conditional use permit. So does anybody have any other thoughts or would somebody like to make a motion?
Then I'll make a motion. I would recommend that we approve staff recommendations with the following amendments to it, that parking spaces are a maximum number allowed at the 120% figure. And that, um, and now you were saying that we should include a good neighbor agreement or not?
No, what, what, what I was saying, and, and, and sorry to try to be more, more eloquent here than maybe I should be, but a conditional use permit is a good neighbor agreement. It says you will operate within these terms, you will not cause problems, you will be limited to these activities. And if you violate that, we can revoke that, in my opinion. It's better than a good neighbor agreement. I do not think that this board should be getting involved in good neighbor agreements because, one, that's not what the board's supposed to be involved with. Those were agreements about community policing, usually when there were problems. And I would gather that those are usually clubs and bars where there's been big issues. Um, again, I don't want to get zoning staff into agreements that are not part of what zoning carries out. What zoning carries out is what we're doing here today. Do we or do we not want to grant a conditional use permit? And if we grant that, that permit should have significant enough conditions in there to more than meet what I would call a good neighbor agreement.
Okay, you just confused me there for a second as I was, as I was thinking my amendment here. So the only amendment I wanna put in here is I, I would go with staff recommendation, which is approval of the conditional use permit and the parking lot and the, um, conditional use for selling alcoholic beverages in the office here. Subject to adding on to their, uh, another provision that parking be at the maximum number allowed by law.
Okay, I'm gonna ask from staff's perspective, would that be clear enough as a condition? And, um, based on site plan requirements, uh, for open space, et cetera, would they be able to meet all that?
So what I'm hearing is that the, the condition would be that the, uh, minimum, the, the minimum requirement for parking is the maximum allowed under the ordinance. Uh, for that DMX1 district.
Yeah, the maximum is 62 right now, and the maximum you allow is 100, is, is 62. I mean, I would like to see 150, but we can't do that.
Right, right.
So I'm saying maximum allowed within, uh, the formula that you use.
Yeah, yeah, so I, my, I think I understand. I think you're saying that they need to provide at a minimum what we will allow as the max.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would, I'd vary a little bit from the numbers we talked today when we get to final, uh, square footages. But yeah, we're, we're pretty close because we know it's 300 maximum occupancy.
Okay, well, so this I want to put a number in there, so I, that, I thought I'd use the verdict.
But yeah, so you're asking for the minimum parking requirement, uh, in their site plan review to, to be held to the 120% maximum?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um. And I totally get that, Lynn. Now, one, one odd thing is, I, I believe that our zoning code on parking requirements does allow off-site agreements to be used, uh, to meet the required number of spaces. So in a weird way, we couldn't require all of them to be on-site. Um, and they'd have to provide like a shared parking agreement. So could we do it where they either meet the maximum on-site? Uh, they, they, they meet the minimum, which, which would be the maximum allowed? Or they have to provide for appropriate shared parking agreement? Uh.
Yeah, so that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
Okay, all right.
I want to try to address the parking issue.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, I think that's well intended and I totally get it. Uh, perhaps we could say something like, they'll have the minimum amount of parking spaces as shown on their diagram and, um, would need to provide, um, additional shared parking agreements, uh, to meet the parking maximum. Can we do that? Eric, does that sound appropriate?
Mr. Chair, Eric Lindy, uh, so the, the maximum is only gonna be applicable to what's provided with the site. The board could ask for additional shared arrangements, uh, based on certain size of fence or something. That's still something in their purview, I think, for this.
So could we do, um, the maximum number allowed on-site plus the shared agreement to be provided?
Yeah, if the board feels like that would, you know, take care of overflow, that's, yeah, that's within their purview, I believe.
Let's do that.
Yeah, the, the only concern I, I would have as well, how, how much off-site parking can we ask for? I'd like to have 200 spaces, but I don't think we can do that. Can we ask for shared parking agreements for more parking than what the city ordinance would require?
I, I think that you can do that, yes. Um, we've had shared parking arrangements enforced by zoning in the past, so, um, and that doesn't defeat the standard of what's provided on-site, which is meant to minimize the amount of developed parking. So, um, I think that the board could ask for additional shared parking based on certain size of fence or something of that nature.
All right. Holly, if, if we wanna do that, then I think you're gonna have to specify how many spaces they're gonna have to show in the shared parking. I mean, 'cause again, some, some of us might, might say, well, I'd like 150 spaces, but is, is that a reasonable request? We're gonna have to base that on something.
Could we do that for the, um, oh, the goldfish bar, um?
Right, but, but they had like 12 spaces on-site, that's it, I mean.
Yeah, they had a shared parking agreement across the street, but I don't think we required a number.
Right. So just wanna say, say a shared parking agreement with, uh, the businesses south can, uh, or they come up with a shared parking agreement? Um, it might be difficult for us to say what property. In my personal opinion, they ought to make it feel like the bank to the west, that's not across Grand Avenue. But I don't know if the bank wants to do that. So, so I just don't wanna get us down a, a, a rabbit hole that's a little too difficult to, to map out here.
That's why I don't wanna put a number on it, I mean, uh, and you said we have the neighbors all involved too. If their shared parking agreement is big enough, she needs to sign more. So if we just, she has one in place.
Just say a shared parking agreement to, uh, uh, to, uh, accommodate intended audiences? I don't know if we can do that.
I don't know, I just, I just think if they have one, they're not gonna have what supplies, so, um.
Right.
I, I think just to have one, she knows what she needs.
Okay, all right.
So there, again, this is Bart, so you're not going to put any kind of number of spaces associated with the number of attendees? You would just leave it to the owner? 'Cause I don't think we could say it for the number of attendees, 'cause I don't think we've done that in any other shared parking agreement.
Okay, yeah, and, and I don't think we need to specify where. Um, that's, that's gonna have to be a negotiation tool, let's each should come up with a shared parking agreement to assist in managing parking for, for the venue.
Yeah.
Okay. So is your motion to approve adding an item 11, which he develops a shared off-site parking agreement to be able to assist in handling events of appropriate size or something, all right?
Mr. Chair, this, this is Eric Lindy, uh, big hair had his hand break, so.
Okay. All right, well, I, I kinda wanna get her squared out and then we'll go to Dave. So is, is that your motion with your amendment?
Also with the maximum spaces on-site.
As long as we can do that, is, I'll, I'll make Judy and staff comment here, and we do that.
So you want the maximum parking, um, as you already just said, Lynn is approving, the minimum parking for their site would be the maximum parking spaces that are allowed, which is 120% plus developing a shared parking, um, an, an off-site shared parking agreement? So those are both part of the one additional condition then, Lynn?
Yes, and, uh, in the words that to accom, on the shared parking, uh, agreement to accommodate guests at the venue. The number of guests at the venue, so he's not gonna have five spaces, like 600 people.
The number of anticipated guests, okay.
Okay, thank you. But if she has 30 people, she doesn't have to have it.
Yeah, okay, so, so Judy, from a legal perspective, that's, uh, I guess what, what I would call fair enforceable condition?
That is, that is concrete enough that, um, everyone can know what the expectation is.
Excellent, okay.
So I think we can move with, yeah, we can do that.
All right. Now, we're, we, we, we don't have to quickly vote here, it's just that with discussion, we do have a motion uh, to approve with a condition. Hi Lynn, we can have more discussions first. Um, Dave, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, other part of the thing, the fact that she's gonna have agreements, we can't, we can't park on the street if they wanna park on the street. So.
People can, this is true, but, but the idea is there's a little bit of extra protection and maybe kinda common sense. If she has a current parking agreement on file, that's gonna help take a little pressure, hopefully, off street parking. Uh, she just has to make it available. We can't necessarily guarantee that that's where you or I would park if we show up to our cousin's wedding.
Exactly, and, and I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something because.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we'd really like for you to park up the street at Hopeport, but we park across the street. At that business, which that speaker earlier today said that he was happily, you know, at a, at a, like, really lucky.
Exactly, yeah, so if she makes that available on her website, when she has her contract agreement, when people put it in their invitation to their guests, then that's how she'll let people know that's available.
One other quick question I had, the maximum allowed spaces is driven by the size of the building, per footage of the building, is that right, Eric?
Some of, some of the parking requirements are driven by square footage. Uh, some of them are driven by things like seats and so forth. In this case, the zoning is limited to 300 maximum occupants in the, in the venue. Uh, with figured at one per six seats. That, you know, that, that, that's the parameter there, not a square footage. A square footage might actually be able to be occupied by more, but it's a zoning limitation, uh, of the, the number of occupants, uh, you sat down.
Okay, so that, that's, that's, plus at 120%, that would be 10 more, so we're talking 60 on-site spots. All right? Back to the, back.
Yeah, approximately, you know, more or less.
Okay, all right. I'm just, I'm just doing the math, I'm not second guessing. Okay, that sounds great, thanks.
Okay, all right, do we have any other thoughts or comments on this? And or might there be a second to Lynn's motion?
Yeah, this is Nathan Blake, um.
Yes, sir.
If I could, uh, I'll second it with, and, and propose a friendly amendment.
Please do.
Uh, which is that the, our, our normal, um, conditional use permits usually include, although I think it's a belt, the center's type of provision, usually include some sort of language that talks about the zoning enforcement officer's ability to bring the permit back to our board, uh, if they determine that the operation of the business is a nuisance or that it's a pattern of violating these conditions.
Right.
Et cetera, uh, and that's missing in this, and not that I don't think that actually has, um, a lot of, uh, legal effect, but because she can do that on her own, but I, I do think it's, it's a good thing to include in here just for everybody. Um, to your point earlier about the good neighbor agreement, I, I agree, it's not a wise thing for us to do as a decision for, for practical reasons, but also, uh, for practical reasons, I guess, on, on, on a few different levels. Uh, but I do think that that type of provision would be helpful to clarify what's at.
Uh, right, Chair, I think that is a great comment. I see staff has highlighted, uh, the sheet here, which was the agenda item. Can, can you slide up to the top of the page there? Um, are these actual conditions or are these normal things contained in a conditional use permit?
These are standards for any conditional use.
Standards for any, all right, so they may not be listed separately in their conditional use permit, but it's a standard for any condi- use permit, but it's a standard for any conditional use permit.
It's enforced, yeah, that's enforceable, and it would be, normally replace those in the order at first.
Yeah. If it's in the order, then I think that's going to be clear enough. Uh, but can you slide up to the top of that page, because there's some other conditions there, too, then, that, that I think, uh, both the operator and the neighbors would want to know about? Whoops, all right.
That is just on two pages, so you're going to have to read it in portion.
Yep. All right, so it won't cause congestion, there's, going to have litter receptacles and clean up their garbage, correct? Okay. So Nathan, if you're okay with the fact it will be in the decision and order, so is that clear enough for the record?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's a very good point, I agree with that completely. All right, and did I hear you say that you wanted to then second her motion?
Yeah, get it moving.
All right, okay. So we've got a motion by Lynn and a second by Nathan to grant the conditional use permit request, subject to the city's 10 conditions, and including a condition 11, that, that would require, uh, putting as much parking on-site as allowed, uh, within the city ordinance, and also having a requirement for an off-site parking agreement to remain in force throughout. That's clear enough for the record? We'll go ahead and take a roll call, vote. All those that would be in favor of granting the requested conditional use permit request, we'll have Tyler do a roll, say, uh, yes or no?
Marloes Jones?
Yeah.
Lynn Carlson? Dave Gare? Justin Gross?
Yes.
Nathan Blake?
Yep.
Cindy Smith?
Yeah.
And Mel Pines?
That would be a yes. Okay. So motion carries, is that 7-0?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so, um, again, I want to thank everybody for their heartfelt testimony today. What I would suggest to you, Taylor, once this is built and done, one of the first events you should have is a neighborhood open house, um, and invite everybody to come. So, um, I wish you well with your business proposition, and, um, keep it between the lines, and you should be a good asset to that neighborhood. Okay, so that, that concludes item number nine. The only other business of the board, I believe, this afternoon would be to approve minutes of last month's meeting. Any board member who was present, uh, if they have any questions on the minute, or if not, they can make a motion for approval.
I move to approve last month's minute.
All right, unless there's any questions, changes, would there be a second?
This is Cindy, I'll second.
All right, motion by Marloes, second by Cindy to approve the minutes, all that were present last month. Um, I think that was everybody, we can vote, uh, we'll do roll call here again with Tyler.
Lynn Carlson?
Lynn, is that a yes from you?
That's a yes, I was having trouble unmuting.
Sorry. Dave Gare?
Yes.
Justin Gross?
Yes.
Nathan Blake?
Yes.
Cindy Smith?
Yeah.
Marloes Jones?
Yeah.
And Mel Pines?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, do we have any other business to tend to, Bert or Eric?
Um, no, I believe that takes care of everything.
Okay, all right, well, uh, staff and fellow colleagues, I thank you for your, uh-
Goodbye.